Because if the water's cold, then the pipes start moving differently.
It is 2:15, and I will call the meeting to order of the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District to order. I will ask staff if the Kansas Open Meetings Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Bill Longby.
Here.
Tom Toll.
Here.
Carl Esping. Greg Lenkowitz.
Here.
Trent Davis.
Here.
Mike Hoppick. Jerry Ivey.
Here.
Thank you. We have no hearings or items. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I so move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of the October 14th, 2024 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. New business. Discussion of next meeting day. Well, we picked the nicest day of the year for this one.
That was me.
Yeah.
Guess this coincides with our meeting schedule.
They do. Mr. President, I would Debbie Pack, Finance Director, I would just mention that we do need to have quarterly meetings, so we have to have a meet, we need to have a meeting prior to June 30th, which we will discuss the budget, and then we need to have one after July 1st, but before August 10th, so that we can adopt the budget. So just to keep those two dates in mind. But we, that's how they're listed on here for you, so.
Question, we would normally meet June 9th, the 2nd, I'm assuming those are all Mondays, and not the 2nd, so should that June 2nd be the? Calendar right in front of me, but.
If I may, the June 2nd date is because we won't have a meeting on Memorial Day, so we move it to the following Monday.
Okay. So it is June 2nd.
All right. Memorial Day is May 26th, which would be our
Fourth.
Normal meeting.
Makes sense, yeah. Okay.
Monday meeting.
We'll actually have a meeting on June 2nd and June 9th.
June 9th, okay.
Okay.
Well, I just assumed June 12th since May 12th is Mother's Day weekend, and some of us might not be back or wanting to meet. Not that I'm planning on going anywhere, but.
So Carl, what would your preference be?
What are my choices?
May 12th.
Or is that harvest time?
May 12th.
June 9th, we could do the 9th.
There's nothing wrong with.
The 2nd or the 9th, it's fine with me, either one of those.
Which one poses a bigger problem as far as any agricultural issues?
It's Memorial Day weekend, probably the 9th is better, but that's okay.
9th's good.
We already will be meeting on the 9th?
Okay, well, move, we move, have our meeting on June 9th.
Second that. I have a motion and a second for the next meeting of the district to occur on June 9th, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have any other business or updates?
Did you want to go ahead and set that second meeting until we have that in place or no, for the, the third quarter?
No.
That way everybody knows ahead of time.
Public hearing in the budget, yeah.
I know it's a long time away.
I guess why we're here, we just will.
Boy.
Do it, July 14th, in case there's any snafus, we have a backup date two weeks later.
Can't remember what dates are, what?
So harvest is gonna be early or late?
It's gonna be either one, that's up to you guys. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not working anymore, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
If you want to wait till the 28th, that's fine.
Is there any preference from staff?
No.
I look at both.
Any commissioner preference?
Let's see.
Well, you guys are pretty indecisive today, huh?
I just assumed do it early.
I'm fine with that. 14th of July.
14th.
14th.
Okay. So we'd like to make a motion to set that in place.
Move.
We have the third quarter meeting on July 14th.
2nd.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to conduct the third quarter meeting in, on July 14th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, any other business?
If we have a couple minutes, I might cover a couple of items that have occurred over the last couple of months. Just an update, the lake level is 1462.78, so we're just, just right under the conservation pool level or the bottom of the V-notch. Menter gauge is about 27 cubic feet per second, and we shoot for 20 cubic feet per second based on our operations agreement, that's kind of the trigger. We were planning to have an operations agreement meeting on February 18th, just to go over the agreement we put in place last, about the middle of last year. And it's an agreement between the Kansas Water Office, DWR, and the Access District, and it basically is the implementation of the entire process, and what we try to do to save water is the long-term goal. And we wanted to have a meeting yearly to assess whether we were meeting our goals or if we needed to make any changes, but it got canceled till March 18th, so still haven't had that. And that's just with the Access District and DWR and Kansas Water Office to just talk through how things are going. So still have that in play. The other thing that's in the hopper is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is doing a water control manual update for Canoplis Lake and Wilson Lake and several other lakes, but Canoplis has not been updated since 1984. So we're several years out, and it went, the lake filled up and went in operation in 1948, so that gives you an idea. It's been quite some time since it was updated, and they are in the process of doing that. There was a public meeting in Ellsworth, the end of January, which was attended pretty well, and they talked about why they're doing the updates to the manual. And they want to factor in drought and basically looking for comments from those in the area, and there's a way to do that on the website. And the long-term goal is to have all of these manuals updated. Doesn't sound very quick, but by the end of 2028. So they're just getting started in the process and have made a few visits. Drought is gonna be pretty prevalent in their new manual, and I think, we didn't see a lot of comments at the Ellsworth meeting for Canoplis Lake, because we've been trying to figure a way to manage the water in Canoplis Lake for the last, well, since about 2006, 2007, so not a lot of discussion, some about downstream, letting the volume of water out of the lake that tends to cut, cut away the banks, and you've had plenty of conversation on that, Tom, with the Corps.
When the lake fills way full, and it gets to the point where they need to start, like, let's say, sort of emergency releases, they tended to, in the past, go from zero to 60 all at once and, and open the gates up and let it go. Well, you're dry going into that, so then they run that large volume of water down the river, and it, that dry, that dry soil in the river tends to cut out, wants to wash away when it gets really high, and then they'll, you know, then it'll be there for a couple of weeks or whatever, then they decide, oh, we're where we want to be, and then they shut it off. Then our banks would just go right into the river. So we've been working with them to step in and step out a little bit over a period of time, so that should help us save our riverbanks a little.
And that was what most of the public comment was at that particular meeting, but I would say there was about 40 people there. It also included Wilson Lake, but not a lot of discussion from Wilson Lake. It seemed like the majority were from Canoplis, so they got some public input, but that seemed to be the main area. More to come as time goes on, they'll develop some plans and then be sharing them back for everyone to take a look at, but that's probably the two pieces of information that might be new from when we last met. Any questions? I tried to give you a, a, a pretty high-level view, because I, I know there's a group, it looks like, ready to start right away, so glad to answer any questions if you have them.
My question is, there's been a lot of discussion out of Topeka about water, and it looks like they're pouring a lot of money into it.
That's, that's a separate topic, but been attending meetings on that every week or so through our, our Access District, and then also through the Smoky Hill Celine River Basin Advisory Committee on that, and provided input and gathering information. I think their next webinar, if you're interested, I'd be glad to share it with you if you're interested in setting in and hearing what's going on. I believe it's the 27th of this month, maybe mid-morning or around noon, 12:30, I'm not sure, but I could get that information to, to Holly, and she could share it if you're interested in hearing their plan and what they're doing, but they're definitely pouring some money into water, which I'm kind of excited about, so.
Jerry, anything else? I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Hey, Tom, do you want these two? If you can't figure that out, anyone will help you.
I'll keep working on it.
It takes a bit.
I just, I'm gonna call Richard and say, hey, you guys screwed that thing up. I forgot to tell you I told.
No worries. Thank you. Apparently we're still on the air.
It's a little. Hey, look, how you doing?
I'll go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, everybody, welcome to the study session for the Salina Animal Services update for Monday, February 24th, 2025, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hammond, or is it?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Question, Jeff Hammond, Parks and Recreation Director. I also have.
I also have with me, sorry, Jeff Hammond, Parks and Recreation Director, also have behind me is Monique Hawley, the Animal Services Manager, and our Operations Manager Andrea Lem, Andrea Born, and they probably most likely be coming up here as part of this presentation as well. So throughout this presentation, I do have some opportunities to stop for questions, but I started off, you know, we've had some questions recently about the decision to place the animal shelter under Parks and Recreation when it became a city department or city's responsibility and service. In 2013, the animal shelter was looking for a good home under the city of Salina. Previously, it was under the county, and at the decision point of the time, would it be under the Parks and Recreation or under the Police Department? And I believe at, at the time, it was show, the, the choice was to choose an animal welfare and a community service approach rather than an enforcement, an animal control approach. And the documents I found, January 1st, 2014, the animal shelter was under the city of Salina, under the Parks and Recreation Department. Staffing table, we've had some adjustments made over the last few years, some additions to the staffing table for animal shelter. It's, you know, a seven-day-a-week operation, whether we're open to the public or not. It's cleaning animals seven days a week. It's exercising those animals, providing medications, vaccines, food, water, and that, which is automated. And we're also subject to callouts at night as well, so we, we added in 2023, we added a full-time receptionist, added a full-time kennel technician position, also added a part-time kennel, kennel technician position, whose main responsibilities are for cleaning. And then we also hired temporary seasonal dog walkers. We hired two in 2023, and they were considered temporary seasonal employees, and they primarily duties of walking dogs. And then just, just this past year, in 2024, we added more kennel techs for temp seasonal and maybe one additional dog walker as well. We also provided additional managerial support by reorganizing one of our positions into the Operations Manager role, which is Andrea Born's role, where she has dual duty of animal shelter for year-round, but also some responsibilities of the running the water park, which is what she was originally hired for. Right now, we have an animal control coordinator position, which is vacant. We're getting close to being, being able to make an offer for that position, and we have the lead, lead animal control officer, which was recently named. Cleaning standards under statute KAR 91814, which provides standards for cleaning from the Kansas, Kansas Pet Animal Care Act, which is under the Kansas Department of Agriculture, and they have a pet, a, a division under that responsible for animal shelters, rescues, humane societies, and the like. And this is the standard, I provided some of the context of the standard that was in that document to show what the, what the requirement is. And then what we do, the last four bulleted points are what we do on a daily basis to provide that level of cleaning and meet that standard in the shelter. There has been a question in public input in the past about, should we look at something more than just meeting the standard? Should we be exceeding those expectations? That would require additional staffing to meet that standard. Right now, we're able to meet this standard with the staffing we have, which is that full-time kennel tech position and the half-time kennel tech position, and we have that one temporary seasonal staff member who assists in cleaning as well. And I think the, our efforts are, you know, I, I think we, we've passed inspections from the state of Kansas. We've had six inspections that we've passed in the last two years, and they've not identified anything in that inspection relating to cleaning. So since the original, let me, let me go to, if I can ask Mr. Gardner to go to slide six, advance it one more slide, those recent inspections I've documented here. As you can see, in July 11th and August 30th of 2023, we have, we did have an unsatisfactory inspection, but since then, we have had satisfactory inspections from complaints, and those complaints were unfounded. So if I can go back to slide five, these are some of the improvements that we've made relating to these inspections. I won't read all these out, but a couple I want to call out, the staffing additions I've already spoke about, the temp seasonal staff or the cleaning staff there. We've updated and published staff policies and procedures, and that's a, a large document that all staff members have received and are being trained to, or have been trained to, and that is for animal services and for animal control, so it's quite thorough and extensive. We've reinstituted the, the use of the adoption room. We have, we've documented daily logs of exercise, food, kennel cleaning. So we go back to, or to slide seven. Some of our goals for this year, increase our capacity to care for communities' dogs and animals, dogs and cats, and this, to me, means that we've had a, we've been full as a shelter, and you'll see how full we are in some of the future slides. And we've had an unprecedented amount of dogs and cats, and we've had to add kennels to accommodate that for dogs. And we've often had to prevent timely surrenders and strays, because we just didn't have the kennel space for them, and that's what I mean by capacity to care. We just didn't have the capacity to care for the community and provide that community service. We would like to institute a staff-driven volunteer program, need to grow our foster, foster cat program, develop a plan for reconfiguring the fence behind the animal shelter. Once the dog park gets constructed, that's in Parker Park, we can open that dog park up for exercise yard for animal services only, and continue to research trade or transfer opportunities for pit bull-type dogs. I didn't read all these off, but I was just highlighting some of the goals. Objectives for the use of animal donation funds. I've provided this slide before in my September presentation to you relating to how we use the donation funds. I'd like to point out that these funds were directed towards Salina Animal Services and, and not the friends of the animal shelter. They've always been city-related funds or city, city funds for the operation of the Salina Animal Shelter with these objectives for using those funds. And I provided a donation fund summary from 2024 for the expenses relating to how we've expended some of those funds in 2024, and how we, and some of the funds we've received as revenue for funds being directed towards the Salina Animal Shelter. Also on the bottom right, there is a fund balance that I've showed you recently when I went before you to approve or request for the approval of the dog park at Parker Park to replace the dog park that's behind the animal shelter, and fund balance, $630,000 with the expense that will be in the future for that dog park, the, that'll be the fund balance approximately for, after that dog park is built. Slide 10, the current census of animals in the, in, in our care, this is as of February 20th. And this is a little different format than I might have showed before. We wanted to kind of consolidate this somewhat, so it wasn't broken out by different areas of the animal shelter, we wanted to show it by animal. So dog kennels available, we have 32 regular kennels, 14 court-holed kennels, 10 garage kennels, and two isolation kennels, so a total of 58 possible kennel spaces, but we have 68 dogs in-house as of February 20th, and that basically means we have some puppies in, that are sharing, sharing some spaces right now, so if there are litter of puppies, they're from the same litter, that we can keep them in the same kennel space. And then cats, in our cat room, we have 18 spaces. Our isolation room for cats, we have 11 spaces, and in the trap room, eight, a total of 37 spaces for cats, and as you can see, we have a total of 19 as of February 20th, 19 cats in-house. And right now, we have no dogs or cats in foster care. And we have actually one foster, so I have a stopping point for questions if you have any at this point in time.
How does the foster care program work? I'm not familiar with that.
I'm gonna have Monique Hawley answer that question, so I can tell you, you can start off and, Monique can pick up from where I left off, is that it's somewhat heavily controlled by the state of Kansas. They have a lot of requirements. Any foster has to comply with the requirements, same requirements that we do in a shelter, they, they in their home have to comply with those same requirements.
We have, I believe.
Just making sure.
We have three fosters right now that we have, are available to us, and they're basically cat fosters. And if a cat is in need, it's basically cats that we're fostering at the moment. If a cat is in need, say it's a mama cat that hasn't had kittens yet, and she's really far along, we can send that mama cat to the foster person, and they keep that cat until it has the kittens, and then keeps it, keeps all of the kittens and mama cat until the kittens are weaned and eight weeks old, have to be eight weeks old and two pounds in order to come back and get spayed or neutered. If there's a, a set of kittens that, say, doesn't have mama, and they need to be bottle-fed, then those kittens then would go to foster care. There could be an opportunity for a dog foster for, like, say, we have a heartworm-positive dog, and we're looking for that animal to go to foster care, because it's really hard to have a heartworm-positive dog being treated and keep it in that shelter kind of environment, because they have to be kept very quiet, so we would, you know, are looking for somebody that would foster dogs, that way we can put that dog through the heartworm treatment, and it's not quite so stressed, and is able to then get through that treatment with, and it's a long process. It can be anywhere from three to six months, depending on how bad the infestation is of the heartworms.
And I can, I'll add a few other points of, the shelter is a volunteer, we treat it as a volunteer, and they're subject to the same requirements that we would have for a volunteer. They have to be, they have to be registered with us, they have to go through a background check. Also, Monique's animal shelter, they just can't be a foster independently from the animal shelter. It has to be part of the animal shelter, she has to be responsible for it, and she's technically responsible for those animals, those cats and dogs that could be in someone else's home, but it's still part of she's the agency that is responsible and has to make sure compliance of those foster conditions and homes, and cats and dogs have to be cared for according to how the state of Kansas requires us to operate shelters, operate fosters, so.
The fosters receive the Kansas Animal Act packet that we follow, they get that same packet on, upon approval of their foster care application, they get that, we have them go through it and read it, we go and inspect their. through it and read it, we go and inspect their homes to make sure that they are up to standard for the state to have those animals in their care.
And my last point is, there are funds available that we do provide those individuals for that care. It's not on them to provide those expenses, we provide that to them, whether it be food or medications or vaccines.
On the employee staffing, you know, we've made improvements and added staff, have we been able to retain those employees?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we've had, we had this question in the advisory board meeting, and we've had, we've got two officers that have been there for three years, two animal control officers that have been there for three years, I'm sorry. And then I've got a set of three newer ones that, all three of them will be here about a year in the next month. It's kind of like March, April, May, then they'll be here for their year. I've had the same kennel tech for the last three years. I've had the same little gal that's cleaning cats, she's been there for two and a half One of the animal control officers just bumped up to the lead ACO, so we have had some retention.
How about the receptionist?
The receptionist, she's been there for a year, I believe.
She started with us, and she did temporarily go to another department because she wished to, but she realized she wanted to come back. She didn't, she, she liked it, and she came back. Well, the one thing I would add to that, Commissioner, is that we have had, have had some turnover in that temporary seasonal staff member who only works about 20 hours a week, and we've had some consistent dog walkers, but we have had some fluctuation in our people staying to walk dogs.
But we've really seen an increase in the, in longevity since the pay plan was implemented. So we're paying folks a little bit more, and we've found that that has been successful in keeping people a little bit longer.
That's correct.
An idea that I had some time ago, and I was told, that's a great idea, and that's some of my frustration is things never get advanced and move forward, is put the animal control officers, since they are an officer, they do carry a badge, they do write citations under the direction of the police department. I think this would take pressure off the shelter and make the shelter more of a friendly environment, not a you're going to jail type environment. I don't know if there's any consensus on that, and I, I know the police department has their hands full, but I think that would be something we need to consider, is putting the ACOs under the direction of the police department.
I guess somebody would have to help me know how that's handled in other communities because.
At most every other community, it's under the PD.
I guess I'd need to know that, because it seems to me that, you know, with some of the issues we're dealing with now with our police department, and again, they've been shorthanded too, not sure how, I mean, I'd have to talk to Captain, you know, Police Chief about that and see his feelings and stuff, I'm not sure. Don't, it's kind of like everything for every action, there's a reaction, I'm not sure what that other side of the equation does for us, so.
Yeah, and we haven't done any research on that. I mean, here, we certainly could, if this commission's interested in us doing some research about, you know, placing the animal control officers underneath a different department, we certainly could do that. I mean, there's lots of questions about where do we put them, what's the space look like, how do they, how does that operate in conjunction with the animal shelter? I mean, they're not just going to be fully separate, so, but we certainly could do some, some research and legwork if the commission wants us to do that.
I know it's been a while that we have a former police officer that might be able to address that.
You know, I hate to say it, but that might be a starting point to recruit new police officers too. And do our ACOs carry body cameras?
They do.
Are they through the police department?
No, there are body cameras that we purchased, it's, they're basically the same as what, they're not the Axon, I believe, but they're a pretty high-tech camera, and they all wear them, and they have to have them on whenever they get out of their trucks and, and are, you know, working with the public. Just so it's for their safety, it's for the shelter's safety, and it's also for the public's safety, because we want to make sure that everybody's open and everything's transparent.
You know, and there are two functions, you know, one is animal control, which sounds a little more police, but then you have the shelter, which sounds more like a, a parks, you know, it's kind of like you, you think of your National Park Rangers that, you know, they're under the Department of the Interior, not, and they do animal control, so that it's a blending of two functions. Now, I grew up in a city where it was under the police department, but it probably started that way, and nobody ever thought about changing it, because some of its role is more, excuse me, police-related, but.
Yeah, whenever there's a big issue with animals, the police are generally involved as well.
We do work, we do work, animal control officers do work with the city of Salina Police Officers and also the Sheriff's Department as well.
So I guess I would need clarity on, with your idea, Commissioner Longbine, if, are you suggesting that the, the animal control officers would be sworn law enforcement staff, or would they just be civilian staff under the, the police department's purview?
Yeah.
Okay.
Work under the police department.
My, I mean, just kind of shooting from the hip here, but there's still going to be that interaction with the public, with animal control officers at the shelter, because there's going to be the animals that are, that are brought into custody, and there's going to be kind of that, I guess there's that crossover that you can't really eliminate. And then that, to me, begs the question, if you want that separation, where are those officers going to be? Like, are they going to be operating out of the police station with the sworn staff? And I guess I'd just have a lot of questions, I'd want to hear more about how that idea would work, because my, it just seems like those are two separate things, and that, on the surface, I could see how if you, if you hadn't worked law enforcement, how those would kind of come together, but I can tell you, like, most people who are, who are signing up to be in law enforcement and to help the public, they're kind of here, and then animal control's kind of over here, and there's just different points of interest or focus. But I don't think you're going to get that crossover between those two things. I mean, even if they're under the purview, it's just, I guess my inclination would be, let's try and fine tune what's going on now before we look at restructuring, because it seems like we have a, a police department that, they're still trying to get their, their staffing fully, you know, done, and then we have some, some things we're fine tuning at the animal shelter, and I, I think if you start, yeah, my gut reactions, we cross those over, it might cause more complications, but.
Yeah, I, I guess, Mayor, one thing I'm looking at is making a separation between animal shelter and animal control.
You know, I understand that, I do, and that would, again, I come back to where, where would we house the, the animal control officers?
Right, but in most jurisdictions, it's, it's under the police department.
There's certainly a lot of details that we would have to work out. I mean, there are functions that the animal control officers do at the shelter that if we pulled them away, would have to get done some other way.
That was my other question as well.
But I, you know, we haven't, we haven't gone down that path, so we haven't divided all that out. If, if you want us to do that, we certainly can provide some additional information and, and find out how other communities do it, but I think, I don't think it's a one-for-one split. I think if we split them out, we're probably going to have to hire some additional people at, at the animal control to provide some of the services. I mean, I know when they intake, they're part of the intake process, so they vaccinate animals, they do, I mean, there's a myriad of things that they do at the shelter, and if it's, they're completely separate, and they're dropping an animal off, they wouldn't be able to do those sorts of things. So we just have to divide that out and see what the workload looks like. That certainly, that analysis certainly can be done, I mean, we can look at it.
I think at the beginning of this presentation, it was noted that in 2013, they, they made the decision to go with the Parks and Rec versus the police department, so, I mean, that to me would be a starting point to be look at what argument was made back then that led them to that decision rather than trying to reinvent the wheel 12 years later.
From what I remember, it was, most of the public interacting with people at the shelter are gonna want more of a folksy, parks, family-oriented person than someone in a uniform and a badge carrying a gun. I mean, it just, they both, both very nice people, but it's just different persona, different approach to, to handling the animals. I mean, some part of the job is, is rough, and I'm glad to hear that police and sheriffs do back up when you need it, but it's, it's, it's a very public-facing, interactive service.
And I think anything we can do to take some of the load in the shelter and pressure off the shelter would be a step in the right direction.
Ready to move on?
I do have, I had another question, and maybe it's, it's handled further down here, I can't remember, but when we do an intake on the animals, and you know, we hear, it's not just here, it's other places, we're here about, you know, kennel cough, and of course, kennel cough travels, it's no different, a lot of illnesses, and anytime you have a community living type situation, do we test animals for certain things when they're brought into the, to the, to the animal shelter? And then if, I'm just, I'm not sure what process we do when we take them in?
We don't, we don't do a testing process, but we, they'd go through vaccines when they come in, right when they come in, they get, if it's a dog, they get bordatella, distemper, they get their flea control, which right now, we're using simpirica, and then if, we try and do drontal, which is a wormer right there at that time, so they get those four things right when they come in. And then on the cats, they get their feline distemper vaccine, revolution for fleas, and then also drontal for the, for any kind of worms. So when those, you know, come in, that's what they get. Now, we have such a high volume of animals that come in that are not vaccinated for any of those things, when they come in, they can, even though they're getting that vaccine, when they come in that front door, it doesn't always keep them from getting it once they get in, and then it fireballs, you know, and.
Or they could come in and be a carrier, is what you're saying.
Yes, they could, they could be non-symptomatic, and then spread it to everybody else.
I just didn't know what precautions we took, and I'm guessing that's about the best we can do, is vaccinate when they come in.
Yes, I mean, the best would have a quarantine area for dogs that came in that were stray, that we could hold them, but we just don't have the room for that. We don't have an area that we could put them in to hold them for that 72 hours, to keep them separate from the rest of the population.
So I guess I'm going to ask this question, if, if we had a wish list for the animal shelter, would that be one of the things that we would look at, is being able to have a holding area for both cats and dogs for?
I believe that was identified on the Shelter Planners of America study that was done, that they provided more isolation of, the more ability for isolation of dogs.
We do want cats, the cats go into what we call our trap rooms, and it's a room that's separate from the cat population, that's separate from ISO. ISO is clear in the back of the building, and then the stray cats go into another room that's called our trap room. That room is, it has a door that closes, and we don't let public go in there unless they are missing their cat, and they want to go in there and, to see if their cat's there. But the cats are a little bit more isolated than the dogs because we have just that little extra room for them. The dogs, we don't have that ability.
Okay, one more question.
Sorry, I'm gonna hop up here and add something that Mo's, we talked about, I work really closely with the vet that we contract.
Give us your name.
I'm sorry, Andrew Born, you're good. I'm the operations manager. I work very closely with the vet that we do have contracted that comes up every week for spay and neuter, and she shared research with me over the stress of that intake, and how that then hurts the immune system, and when they're getting like kennel cough or any kind of other thing that goes with it. And there is research now that shows a specific medication that we can give at intake to help lower that stress, that will then help prevent that, and that's something I've actually been working on this last week, and we're going to be putting into effect here in the next week or two to hopefully lower that risk of kennel cough and everything else coming in. So, sorry, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Just one more question about the use of the donation funds. A lot of the unrestricted expenses look like things that should be in our yearly budget. Is, is our budget for the shelter too low? I mean, I would think of those donations going for special things, you know, like a dog park, a bench, but budgeted, you know, pet food, postage, I would hope our budget is giving you enough money to handle that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, a lot of these items that were labeled as such, but there were, there were some obvious things that probably most likely should have been taken out of the general fund, our operating fund, but a lot of the things that were relating to volunteers, or fosters, I mean, or they were related to the care and welfare of animals, or for the facility improvement, which, which, but there are, there are, you know, postage should not be in there.
Some of the postage is for when we send animals to K-State, for when we're doing testing for K-State for an animal that had, had, could possibly have rabies, some of the, the postal was from that, that we used to send that animal off. Rather than have the person have to pay for sending that animal off, we use that, that area to, that way we could send it off and have it paid for.
Because there's a, cleaning supplies or services is $10,000, and if we know we're going to spend $10,000 a year on that, or $10,000 more than what is budgeted, we need to increase the budget by $10,000 to, to cover that.
That was a relatively new thing, where we had paying for contractual deep cleaning, which we, yeah, I would agree with you. It was for cleaning of the ceiling tiles in the kennel spaces to ensure a clean environment for the dogs.
But I, I think the short answer is if we didn't have donation funds, we certainly would have to have more money from the general fund going towards animal services. I mean, these things are, we're paying our veterinarian to do the spay and neutering, neutering out of that fund. If we didn't have those funds, we certainly would have to increase the general fund balance.
If, if these are expected expenditures every year, then I would think we're, our budget amount is too low, because we're not, you know, most departments don't have those funds that, you know, you know, General Services doesn't have a friend of the General Services.
If that's a service we're requiring, the spay and the neutering, I, I kind of agree, that should probably be part of our annual budget.
While we're talking about funds and donation funds, I sent a video to share with the commission and public, I don't know if Scott has that, if this would be a good time to share that. It is a chip reader, microchip reader for the public to use. We, we all see someone found a dog, trying to find it, and they end up taking it to shelter, and this is a mechanism that would connect the people that find the dog to track down their owner and get them home without involving the shelter. I think this would be a great use for donation funds, or if we want to do a separate fundraiser. I have no idea what it costs, surely not a lot of money, but if you're ready to roll
El Paso is definitely very innovative, right? And the Animal Services Department was trying to find new ways to get pets back home faster so that they don't have to go to the shelter if they ever get lost. So this reunite site basically allows, if a community member finds a loose pet, they can come over here, scan the QR code, and then scan the animal with the microchip scanner to look for a microchip, and get that pet back home without ever having to go to the shelter at all.
This is a first of the kind in the nation, in the world. This is a self-sustaining microchip station, so if somebody finds a lost pet, they can bring it on over to the station here.
First thing they're going to do is scan the QR code, it's going to go to a website that's going to have lots of information, and it's also going to explain what to do next. After they scan the QR code and get that information, they're going to use this scanner. You essentially wave the scanner over the animal. If it's microchipped, that scanner is going to beep, and a microchip number is going to pop up on the screen. Through the website from the QR code, you can enter that microchip number and hopefully get connected to the owner of that animal to get them straight back home without ever having to go to the shelter.
This is a pilot program, so we look for, and we partner with the Parks and Rec, we're looking for places where we have high intake, where we have lots of lost pets.
If it's your own pet, you can check to see if they have a microchip. If, if they don't, it'll give you information about how to get a microchip, or it can help you register a chip that maybe you didn't know your pet had.
Make sure your pets are microchipped, but it also has to be updated. They don't update themselves. update themselves. So if you ever move, change your phone number, make sure you go into the system and get that updated. When you find a pet, help your neighbor. Again, they're, they're just lost pets. Help them find their way home.
So I think that alone would take a lot of pressure off the shelter.
We're, we're definitely familiar with that brand. We use the same 24-hour, 24-pet watch system for our officers to use. And we have those in the truck for officers to use. But I do see the value in putting in the community as well.
Are animals required to be microchipped? So it's only as good as the number of individuals that microchip?
In my conversations with Monique is that the problem is what they said in the video is they're often not updated. So we have incorrect information.
And last year, City of Wichita did update their ordinance to require microchipping.
It is pretty a valuable identification tool.
We try and, when people are picking up their animal, we ask them if they would like a microchip. We've been doing a lot of free microchips, trying to help people get their pet microchipped because it helps us too. Because if we scan it and we know where it lives, we can just take it home instead of bringing it into the shelter. So some people that have kind of constantly loose dogs were suggesting, hey, would you like a microchip? We'll give it to you for free. We register it right when we put it in there. So it makes it easy. And then, you know, we try and tell them, you know, as, if they take it, you know, just make sure you, if you move, or if you change your phone number, please update this information. So it does help. I mean, it's $8 our cost. The shelter pays $8 per chip, which is not terribly high. And it, but it helps us out in the long run to give them away, to have them, you know, be microchipped and be able to get them home quicker. Because not only do we get to get them home sooner, there are public members, our public people out there that have microchip scanners of their own. And you can get a, a microchip scanner that will scan multiple different kinds of chips. And I do know people who have them in their house just in case. Oh, hey, look, there's a dog running down the street and they can scan it. Now, if it doesn't have a chip, they'll call us and say, hey, can you come out and scan it? We can do that. You can bring it to us, whatever you want to do for us to scan it, we'll get it scanned for you.
So is the cost to the public, if they, if we were, let's just say, if a community makes it mandatory, is it $8 a chip? Is that what you're telling me?
For surgery, it's 24. It's 24 when they go through our surgery process. And then it's 24 if they come in and they want to pay for it. Like say they owe, hey, I want to come in and get a microchip today. Can I come in and do that? We say yes. And they pay the $24. But when they're on intake, and if they're a high running dog that we are getting all the time, and they don't have a chip, we're asking them, hey, can we just do it for free now? For, that way we're, we're covered.
So do they generally agree to that?
Yes. Some people say no, but the majority of the people are like, yeah, cool, yeah, I'll do that. So it just depends on what it is.
We're pretty close to us all having a chip of some kind.
But to answer your question, Mr. Hoppe, it is an $8 cost for that, that we buy in for.
I'm assuming this works for nice little nine-pound dogs that don't mind sitting there with you. Because I could see you trying to get a very upset big dog to sit there while you wave this thing and work on that phone to put in these numbers there.
We got them on leash too.
Right, tied to a tree.
So let's see, moving on, I'm not going to spend, I'm not going to go through this data in detail. However, this is the intake and outcome information from 2024. So we have different varieties of cat intakes, and that's how we categorize them by the type of cat intake, whether it be surrendered, returned, seized custody, seized or in custody, stray, or transfer in. And then the outcome of those cats. And again, definitions of what the different outcomes mean for cats and dogs. I want to point out the DOA is deceased upon arrival, the shelter. That means it was hit by a car, or it was found on the road already hit by a car and had been deceased already. Dog information for intakes and outcomes. I found it interesting that we had 596 strays as an intake, but on outcome, we have 495. So 495 returned owners. I just thought that was a interesting statistic on here. And these are, these are some of, this is the information I provided to the Animal Control Advisory Board on the February 12th, how we calculate live outcomes. And this calculation was provided by the Best Friends Animal Society. And so it's the number of live intakes, subtracting from that the ones that died, the ones that were euthanized, divided by the total live intakes. Cats for 2024, we, we had a live outcome percentage of 74%. And mostly because I believe panleucopenia was a disease where we often found the cats were suffering as they came in. And then our dog live outcome percentage was 95%. And then I combined the summary of, of the live outcomes together, cats and dogs, being 87%. And this 87% does not maintain that 90% live outcome rate that is generally required to be considered a no-kill shelter.
Quick question while you're on that data. Was the, because the cats obviously brought the live percentage down. Was that a one-year disease? Or is that a typical year for cats?
I don't, I didn't provide it in here, but anecdotally, I recall doing the same exercise with Best Friends Society. Dogs were about that 95%, but cats were under 90, approximately 87%. So it's, that percentage actually went down further.
So, and that's from the panleucopenia? And that's like a mini epidemic for, in a particular community?
Yes, we're still seeing, we had two cats, I believe, just in the last month that have come in with the symptoms. And we tested and they were high positive. So we have to make that decision. We check for microchips, things like that, to make sure that they're not somebody's cat. It could still be somebody's cat, but both of them are very, in very, very bad condition. And that spreads very, very quickly. So we take them into the intake room. They stay in that intake room for the whole process of testing. And then we, you know, are very sanitary about not walking through the ISO room. We go back outside, go to the freezer, put them in there. So we're not spreading it because it's, it really decimated. Not only cats at our shelter, it was, you know, there were vets, offices that were saying that they were having a large problem as well. So, and people saying, oh, there's a cat over here that passed away. And we were having pockets, different pockets of, that we knew of, that were, people were having problems with it.
Pockets in the community of areas of the community where you were.
How do cats end up at the shelter? I understand, I understand dogs, you know, running them, ended up there, but.
A stray cat or like just somebody, a cat that's surrendered? Because there's several different ways they can show up. Somebody can call and say, hey, there's a sick cat down here at my house. Can you come pick it up? If it's sick or injured, we will come pick it up. People surrender their cats a lot. They're moving, they can't keep it anymore, family members allergic, those kinds of things, or transfer in from another shelter. If they have too many cats and we have some space, we'll take them in from another shelter. Or, you know, this, this.
Cats are free to roam, correct?
Yes, there is no leash long cats.
Yeah.
Part of the presentation to the Animal Control Advisory Board was based on their request. In November of last year, 2024, several local veterinarians were present and spoke, questioning the no-kill status of the shelter. They also had concerns about the breed-specific language for pit bull-type dogs. They wanted to improve communication, which has happened with the shelter staff. And they wanted to be a better partner with the animal shelter to improve animal lives. And their main concern was us being able to provide a capacity of care, which I talked about briefly earlier, about providing a space and a community service for accepting strays and surrenders. The advisory board did make a motion and vote to recommend for staff to bring forth more information about the no-kill status and how it affects the shelter. And staff provided that report on February 12th. As I stated earlier, all the information that I provided to the Animal Shelter Board is in this presentation. The information I provided is, you know, basically that no-kill is a, well, not me, but Monique and I actually both presented about no-kill is, you know, a philosophy or a movement. We have high capacity of animals that caused us to frequently have the inability, not able to, to take in strays and surrenders. And as a matter of fact, there was a comment made at the Animal Control Advisory about this not being an unacceptable practice. It was unacceptable that we're not able to take strays and surrenders. You know, just based on the data, I don't know if we can kill, call ourselves a no-kill shelter. We're not achieving a 90% live outcome rate. We have adjusted criteria for euthanasia, which I'll, I have some information about that in a couple of slides. You know, we have, we have an increased desire and focus on improving our capacity to care. It's a service that we need to be able to provide to the community. We're a community animal shelter. And we want to find opportunities for increasing live outcomes, especially for cats. And that's still our goal, is to provide opportunity to achieve a 90% or higher live outcome rate. You know, some of the ways we can do that is, especially with cats, is identify more fosters in the community to do more trap neuter release. TNR is what we call it. And we want to encourage responsible pet ownership of all, all animals, all pets. And that was the basis of basic information I shared with the Animal Control Advisory Board, based on their recommendation to provide the, provide that information. Some of our criteria for euthanasia at the Salina Animal Shelter, as I was, I made a list. I'm not going to go through all these, however, these are the criteria. Some of these are absolutes. You know, aggression towards humans and aggression toward dogs is definitely an absolute. Some of these are considerations for possible euthanasia. To be transparent, we did add recently, in 2024, we added length of stay to our consideration for potential euthanasia for six months or greater. And if you, next page shows the outcomes of dog euthanasia that occurred in 2024. And you can see the outcomes. And by the length of stay in days, and over half of those are greater than 180 days, six months approximately. And I'll stop there if you have any questions about that section of the presentation.
Not so much a question, but an enlightenment. I realize now that the term no-kill does not describe what we do on a daily basis. It's a retrospective description of what we've been in the past year. And even no-kill shelters do put animals down. So it's, it's, people hear that, at least including me, you know, oh, wow, we never kill an animal. You know, unless for humane reasons, obviously, but.
Well, there is a lot of misconception about that. And I've tried to, Monique and I've tried to communicate that over the course of the years. It's, it became more important to me, and I'll speak for myself, is that our ability to provide that capacity of care is more important to me than a status or a philosophical movement. Sorry, I'm getting emotional. You know, not, it's, I find it unacceptable that we cannot take strays and surrenders at times. And compared to hanging on to a philosophical movement, which is important. Live outcomes, we strive for live outcomes. We strive for 90% or greater. And we, and we have, we have the ability to do that. It's just, you know, cats are kicking our butt right now.
Well, I, I think that's something maybe the, the public doesn't zero in on. You know, if you, if you look at social media, for instance, and it's, it's kind of a binary thing, like on off to them, like, hey, we're a no-kill shelter or we're not. And like, it's a policy decision. And really, it's, you know, like last year, you guys got dealt a bad hand with felines and, and the disease. And so regardless of intention, it just, sometimes the numbers just don't, don't come out. And I, I just think it's worth repeating because I, I think there is kind of a, a sense of, you know, it's, it's a decision, a policy decision. In this case, it's not.
Thank you, Jeff, for sharing the emotional side of that. You know, as any dog owners have been faced with that hard decision of what's human, humane and for the animal. And that's reality.
Ready to move on? I've provided some other information that I provided in the past. In this 2024, the Friends of the Animal Shelter did announce their dissolution, that they were dissolving themselves as an organization. I provided this in December, September of last year, when I spoke before you last regarding a study session for animal-related updates. We provided this. That's, these are some of the duties that they were typically performed by the Salina Animal Shelter. You know, we've been able to pick up some of those things as a staff, except for two of those items. You know, the two items is, you know, financial aid for vet care, spay and neuter financial aid for surgery clinic, or spay and neuter financial help with surgeries. You know, we do have, since our volume of dogs is always high and have been for the last year and a half, two years, we've always had low rates. And we do have a sliding scale relating to our occupancy. If we have a higher amount of cats or dogs, we tend to start decreasing rates to encourage adoptions. And so it's really rather reasonable to, to adopt their animal. And staff are exploring the means and methods of a volunteer program for the future. And I said that in September, and we have four slides here about what a volunteer program could look like. And I'm not going to go through all, exactly every page of this. But I want to point out a few things. You know, training and expectations, we would provide that training. Part of the reason why we reorganized a little bit with Andrea's position, the operations manager role, was so she can come in and lead that volunteer program and incorporate these things that we were doing at the animal shelter, but then look at it as a greater volunteerism in Parks and Rec wide. Whether it be, you know, people that have volunteer hours they have to do for school, or for, for, for jail, or for community service, we can try to incorporate that, not just in the Animal Services Division, but also in Parks Division and Gulf. So we can look at this as an overall volunteer program, but primarily for the animal shelter. Ensuring expectations, going through training, specific roles and responsibilities, having a schedule so we know who's going to be there, when they're going to be there. a schedule so we know who's going to be there, when they're going to be there, making sure those job responsibilities are understood, having one person to, to go to, which will be Andrea, ensuring actually expectations continued, you know, logging those hours, providing some type of recognition that they are a volunteer, t-shirts, sweatshirts, name badge, doing a volunteer recognition program to make sure they're recognized. The required stuff is application, they need to fill out an application. We need to have them fill out the city waiver for, which has been a point of contention with the previous volunteer group. They were not, they didn't agree with the language of the waiver. Having a background check done, which we do for all staff and all volunteers, whether they're in athletics or coaches, we always do a background check. And then going through that training checklist to make sure their responsibilities are very similar to what, what could happen. We, we got a little detailed with the responsibilities on slide 30, to assist with walking enrichment. And I'm not, I'm not going to read them all out loud, but there's quite a few responsibilities we can have them do. You know, there has been comments made about that we've, the volunteer program did provide some of these services, and, and that was as free of charge, and they did it on their own time. And we have staffed to bring in dog walkers, and that's, that's true. We have, we have to comply with the state of Kansas requirement for exercise of animals. So if I, if we don't have volunteers, I need to staff that to have that service that's required by the state of Kansas.
I had a quick question, Mr. Hammond. You made the comment that there was a concern on the volunteer side as far as execution of the waiver that was given to them. What was the, their concern over the waiver? What verbiage in there?
The, it was done in the, the waiver was done by our city legal staff, and it was, it was a consideration for volunteerism. You, we allowed you the opportunity to provide that volunteerism. I believe it had to do with, and I'm not an attorney, but had to do with waiving all legal rights to claims if, no matter what happened. It was very broad in its language, and that's my understanding.
Do you have any timeline on when this volunteer program will get?
Well, as, as I mentioned earlier, one of our goals is to have it in place in 2025 this year. I don't have a timeline for that. Most likely Andrea's going to need to get through water park season and, and before we were able to execute and start a program. At the most recent letter to the, sorry, most recent Animal Control Advisory Board, the board did make a request to provide a letter from the city or from the staff relating to those five areas right there, to acknowledge the loss of support, to explain the impact of that loss, call for community support, provide information on how to volunteer to donate, and express optimism for the future. We drafted a letter, which is a draft, that potentially could, well, let me go back to slide 31. They also, they made a motion of that and voted on that to request that of the, of staff at that board meeting. I wanted to put that before you as part of this presentation. Slide 33, breed-specific legislation for pit bull type dogs. You know, some of the difficulties and challenges for staff relating to having pit bulls, as you saw in the inventory on an earlier slide, there are 24 pit bulls in, in our possession as part of the census. We're caring for those dogs right now. We, and we provide them food and water and vaccines and medications, whatever they need, and veterinary care if needed. Per the, per the city ordinance, staff cannot offer adoption of a pit bull type dog. Pit bull, there's some, some of the, some of the challenges, you know, pit bulls are certainly, can be a service animal for someone who has a disability. Pit bulls can also be emotional support animals for someone who has, has that need for their housing situation. We have difficulty finding other shelters, rescues, humane societies that are able to take pit bulls. We've, we've usually monthly or bi-monthly exhaust all of our opportunities to try to find someone within a, a region of the United States. There are people that we have found recently, actually in Virginia, that would be willing to take some of our pit bulls. Finding transportation has, is, that's, you know, registered, that's, has insurance, has, each state has different laws relating to allowing the transport of animals. Some are not licensed, some are licensed in certain states, so it's, it's been quite difficult in getting that squared away. Of course, we've always had community members bringing pit bulls into the city limits. And, you know, the, the ordinance is difficult to enforce unless there's another type of infraction being occurred, whether it be leash law or running loose, or a neighbor, a neighbor, excuse me, or a neighbor, you know, complaining about another dog. And put this slide in here to kind of, as far as your, as a governing body, your interest in moving forward on this topic. And it was, was requested to provide this information. And we have provided a previous presentation by the, by Sean Hennessy, the Assistant City Manager, about what other, some, what other, kind of a survey of what other communities have done after changing their ordinance. So many communities have repealed breed-specific legislation. Some have implemented a more stringent dangerous dog ordinance. Some have requirements, whether it be identification through microchipping, spay and neutering requirements, limits of number of dogs, background checks, and prohibition of ownership if you have a felony conviction. So I'm here to, you know, gather information from you as to what information you would like to be provided on this topic, and, and what options would you like to consider?
Yeah, so this has come to the city commission on, you know, occasion over the years, a couple of times we've had discussions about this. Really, at this point, we didn't do a lot of research or legwork into what a replacement for BSL would look like. We just kind of tried to provide a really high-level overview of what some other communities have done. We did put some information about what Junction City's ordinances look like. Really, it's, it's up to the city commission's purview as far as the regulations that we would put in place. You know, typically dangerous dog, or a more stringent dangerous dog is something about everybody has done if they've repealed BSL. Some have required more stricter, more strict requirements on registration and that sort of thing. Some have not. It just depends on, on the community. So you can really go a lot of different direction there. What we really need from the city commission is if there's consensus of the city commission that we want to take another look at this. Staff will go back, we can provide some additional details on, on certain ordinances, look at what other communities have done, and kind of, kind of provide some options. But I didn't want to do that legwork until the city commission tells us that that's something that they want us to do. So I'm happy to answer any questions that we can at this point, but we certainly didn't do a great deal of research or legwork into what a replacement might look like at this point.
The remaining slides are...
As the key word is not just repeal, but replace. And if we look back through the presentation here, that it's pretty obvious that this ordinance is limiting the services to everybody else. When they're, when they are full, they're not able to provide the services for the taxpaying citizens. And replacing this ordinance, if you follow shelters around the state, everyone has an abundance of pit bull type dogs, and they're plentiful.
May I ask a question related to that? When you get a stray or surrender, is it, if all of your, my background's going to call in beds, but if all of your slots were able to be used for any purpose, would you have enough slots? Or is the problem that you don't have enough open slots in certain subsections? Or is it total number of, of slots?
Total number. Literally every kennel occupied on a, on a given day, more often, I wouldn't say more often than not, but an unacceptable amount of times that occurs.
And we have made efforts in the last two years to expand our number of kennels. I mean, we have more kennels today than we did. We opened up the garage, made that a climate-controlled area in order to do that. So we have, we have expanded the number of kennels, and they're still full. I mean, it, it just, it didn't take very long for those to fill up.
Is that building itself expandable, practically speaking? I mean, significant expand, is the space there?
You know, I think there are some issues with adding on to the building. I think you could build, you know, a separate building behind it. We have discussed, there's a kennel site about two blocks away from the facility. That's, I don't, I don't know the address or who they, there's a veterinarian's office, and they have some kennel space beside it that, we have talked with them about the possibility of using that kennel space. It would cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars to remodel the space and get it to where we would need it to be. But we could do that, and that would add, oh, I don't know, 30 slots pretty quickly, something around 30 slots. We could certainly do that.
But building a bigger jail is not going to address the underlying issue. And if, if this ordinance was modified, replaced, I don't, I don't know if people would be, if these dogs were adoptable, if we would still be full, but that's something to consider that.
It's from some of the examples that we've received, even when the BSL ban was lifted, the kennel spaces weren't opened up because the dogs end up there. Now, I'm, I will tell you now, I'm a dog person, not a cat person. I start to sneeze and stuff if I'm around cats too long. But is the problem with cats, are they just free to roam and people can't keep up with
I mean, yeah, I mean, because they have kittens and they're not claimed by any certain person, they're not spayed, neutered. That's the importance of the trap and release program, trying to get those cats in those pockets that are, those communities of cats, trying to get them spayed and neutered. That way it reduces that, those kittens coming out and, you know, then rebreeding in anymore. But we hit it, we have one surgery a month that we dedicate to just trap and release so that any, they, anybody who is on our list will call them and get them on that list to try and get those populations down. So that's a goal, that's one of our big goals, you know, over the summer, trying to hit back hard on that and try and see if we can get some of those cats. They're going to go back into the community, but they're at least spayed or neutered.
And I know on the dog side that some of these discussions we're having are, are problems they have nationally. And so I, I just did a little back checking and stuff after I watched the animal control meeting, and, and I know there was a lot of discussion about the Prairie Paws and stuff. And looking out there at some, some posts that were made, you know, on one of it said, for some reasons, it's never been more difficult to find new homes for our shelter dogs. Prairie Paws out of Emporia admitted that they have some that have been, some dogs that have been held for over a year. So even though they're independent, supposed to have all the answers, obviously, they don't. Went out and looked at a place called KC Pet Project, and they have hundreds of dog kennels, and they only had one empty one. And I went out and looked at those available for adoption, and I'm not giving you a percentage, but a very high percentage of those were terrier slash pit bulls. So I don't think we're alone. And I have a good friend that, that does rescue dogs and takes them all over the country and have talked to him about this, and he goes, your pit bull problem is everywhere. So I don't know the answer. It's, but leaving them in kennels for years is not the answer either. That's very inhumane. But when you have no place to place them, and just because we do away with the, the BSL, I don't believe all these animals get placed. And I'm not even sure some of them, after being in, you know, being in, in the way they have, or even socially, would be accepted. So it's not an easy answer. And there's, if there was an easy answer, we wouldn't be the ones looking. We could follow somebody else's lead, and it doesn't appear that anybody else out there completely has the answer either.
Alan has stated here on page 33 that it is difficult to enforce the ban. And I, I like some of the examples here on page 35 from Junction City to start with requiring the spay and neuter to control the population.
And I, I looked through some of these things, and, and again, like I said, for everything you do, there's, there's, there's a reaction. And a lot of these things are very intensive from a staffing standpoint. So we think we're short-staffed now. I think if you go to doing some of these things, you really put a lot of stress on your staff.
Well, and I think there's a misconception that we have our officers just driving around looking for pit bulls to bring them in. You know, the, the sentence that you read, difficult to enforce ban, that second part without another ordinance being violated. The only ones that are being brought in are the ones that are committing another crime, which is like being on the sidewalk without a leash. I mean, I, I know people who have pit bulls in their house. The one thing the ban has done is make them very careful owners. They watch their dog more closely, but if that dog were to get out and run down the street, it could very easily get, get picked up. I looked at those ordinance from Junction City, and I never thought I'd use this analogy, but it's like putting lipstick on a pig. To satisfy all the requirements of that, you still have to identify that dog as a pit bull. You know, just from a philosophical perspective, you know, it's just, we're right back at the same place, proving the genetics of the dog.
Well, I would even...
And I don't have a, a good substitute proposal, but, but we're, I don't, I don't think it advances us anywhere.
Well, I'm looking at the Junction City requirements, and, and, I mean, you're delving into criminal history of the owner at this point. I mean, that gets pretty intrusive, in my opinion. And, you know, conviction of felony, possession of controlled substance within 10 years, you know, I can go on and on, there's other qualifications, but at that point, I mean, it's almost like the form you fill out when you buy a gun, you know, is essentially, you check those boxes that you're not a convicted felon and, and all these things. And the idea of, okay, this is a breed that we're going to try and regulate and allow it to be legal, but then we're, we're going to that degree of, well, I would call it intrusive intervention.
Well, and it's, it's a declaration that, well, yeah, we kind of know this dog is more dangerous, so we're going to control who owns it. And we're right back in the same argument.
I agree, and that's, thank you for completing that thought, because that's kind of where I was going, a little bit slower. So thank you for being more concise. But it's, it's not that I'm, you know, because I like the idea of like, you know, in a perfect world, everybody has the autonomy to buy whatever they want to buy, if it's, you know, whether it's a pit bull or, or whatever, sports car... whether it's a pit bull or, or whatever sports car. The problem is, you know, every time we have this conversation, and I think I caught a, you know, you have a copy of it, don't you? So every time we open this conversation up, it never fails, there's some god-awful story that illustrates, you know, I remember last time we talked about it, some elderly woman in Florida was basically torn apart, literally, pieces of her were in the backyard when her husband got home. We had an incident, I think over the weekend in Wichita with two pit bulls, and it's just like, I keep coming back to, to what end? You know, we, to what end are we doing this? Because if, if we repeal this, and then we still have an inordinate number of pit bulls in custody, what have we solved? And it circles back to me, and it's probably commentary a lot of people aren't gonna wanna hear, but all this stems from irresponsible pet ownership. It really does. I mean, from the, from the issues with the, with the felines, not spaying and neutering, you know, they're, they're overpopulating, they, they intermingle, they get diseased, it's, it becomes a, an epidemic. You know, you have, you have dogs that, you know, are powerful, and there's responsibility with that, and you train, you train them, and you discipline them. And if you don't do that, then you have problems. And to me, I think part of what we're, we're dealing with today in this conversation is happening because decades' worth of overbreeding of particular breeds that are popular for whatever reason, and irresponsible pet ownership, and hubris. You know, hey, I can handle it, this, this is gonna be a cool dog, and, you know, I could go on. Because I, in my law enforcement years, I saw examples of, of just how it can go awry. And then from a property owner standpoint, you know, I, I have a number of, because they're exempt when they're emotional support animals, you know, I, I had a one dog maul another dog, you know, and we talk about bad feelings between neighbors. So it just, it complicates everything. And I guess the takeaway from that would be, let's be more responsible, please.
I, I think that's very well said. My two cents on this would be, we've had this ordinance for, has it been twenty years? I don't remember the exact date, but, and we still have a lot of pit bulls. If we enact a, you know, a stricter ordinance, what, what makes you think that people are actually gonna microchip and, and spay and neuter their dogs and, and all that if, if they're not even following the, the rules that we have now?
Can I ask a question? To ask, is it a requirement in Salina that each dog be registered every year?
As they get, they have a city license, and that city license is good for as long as their rabies vaccine is due, so it could be a one-year license, a two-year license, or a three-year license, but they are required to have a city license along with their rabies vaccine.
If the dog doesn't show up in a certain number of years, do you send a letter out to say, oh, where is, where is Jackson or?
No.
No, just?
Usually, when the vets do a vaccine, they have on the bottom, you know, there is a requirement for the city of Salina to have your dog licensed. You've had people who've had rabies vaccines for years and years, but still never come get a city license. So, and it doesn't get usually looked at until either the dog is picked up and comes in, or they realize, oh, I need to get this done for some reason or another. They have to have it done for their landlord or something going on like that for the apartment complex that they're in, they have to have that information, so then they take care of it.
Driving without a license is not a problem unless you get pulled over.
When I first got involved with this issue, I visited with three veterinarians, and one of them's concern was, with the ban in place, people are afraid to take and get these vaccinations, get the healthcare for the dog. And essentially, it was useless, because the dogs, they're here, and they're not getting the proper care, and they're not getting the spay and neuter. I, I think in the interest of the shelter, to function not at capacity every single day, we have to make some kind of modification. And I can assure you, if this commission does not, that the anti-BSL forces will be trying to present another petition in the future. And I just come back to this as an unenforceable ordinance that hampers the ability of the shelter to function. I don't know if I have any support from the rest of the commission to move forward, or...
And I'm just gonna speak, that, I know this has been going on, we had the, the petition that didn't meet all the requirements to, to go to a vote, but I can tell you, for every person that stands up here and tells me they want the BSL removed, I have considerably more telling me not to remove it. And so I guess if I'm listening to my constituents, the majority of my constituents that I talk to do not want the BSL removed. So if that's the fact, if that's the case, we need to decide what our next step is.
My experience has been the same. I think no matter what happens with the BSL, we need to tighten up our bad dog ordinance anyway. And probably need to do that even before we consider tackling the issue of the BSL ordinance, because you gotta have teeth in any ordinance that's gonna control bad animals, whether you have a BSL ordinance or not. Right now, people aren't afraid to have a bad dog, because nothing's gonna happen to them. And the very ones who will complain the first is when someone they don't like dug injures them or their property or their pet. You know, we, we get complaints about things before they change, and then if we don't change them in the right way, we get complaints for not having been, you know, stringent enough when we change things. Just like to do things in an orderly fashion. But my experience has been the same as Commissioner Hoppick's. And I would say, and people, I don't, they shouldn't be free to come up and talk to me. People come up and talk to me on, on both sides of it, but I would dare say it's probably three or four to one, folks, say, please, don't remove the, the ordinance.
And I think there's a little misconception of flat removing it versus replacing it.
I think the key is, is it gets replaced, it's not something that's not, I mean, because we're talking about something that you said was unenforceable, and if we start delving into, and I'll use this Junction City example again, to where we are doing criminal background checks on, on people that own pit bulls, I mean, it's untenable, in my opinion, and it's gonna be a, I think it would just be too onerous for, for staff at the shelter to try, I mean...
Well, and that only works for the pit bulls you know about.
That's a good point.
Right, so you're right back to where we are now.
So, I know we only have a few minutes left, so I guess I'm gonna look at staff, and I'm not sure what direction you need. I made a couple notes going back quite a few pages about things as, from the commission that we wanna see the animal shelter do, and one of them that stuck out to me was to see what we do about that holding area for isolating dogs, so we don't spread. And I don't know if that's adding on to the shelter or just reconfiguring it, but it sounds to me like that's something we ought to deal with. So we don't bring something into, and then also, I think we need to review the budget. I think Commissioner Davis made that comment. I think we really need to look at a budget that we, you know, we have the funds, and again, it's a, it's a service to the community, and we need to make sure that our, our shelter's up to date in whatever way, and we offer the services we need to. Maybe that does deal into a little bit of the microchipping a little bit more. Maybe that helps us alleviate some of the things we're running into.
I would definitely be in favor of that, and I don't know how feasible it would be, but it would be nice to get the feedback from our veterinarian community, and I, I don't know how, if there's a survey we could send out, or, I mean, they are the experts on, on animals, and I'd, I'd love to hear their input pertaining to the breed-specific legislation.
And just be proactive with our education for everyone about, you know, optimal pet care and pet, pet ownership, which would be a, a nice thing that whatever volunteer group we have could, could spearhead.
So we just have just a couple of minutes left. I'm seeing the head's nod that it seems like there's consensus about reviewing the budget, about looking at dog isolation, if there's a better way to do that, and trying to get some feedback maybe from the veterinary community. Didn't seem like there was consensus about necessarily removing BSL at this point. Is there consensus around us bringing you back some additional bolstering our dangerous dog ordinance? Is that something you want us to do?
Yes.
And I know there's a, yeah, and is there a definition, what's the, I mean, I guess there's a definition that differentiates between dangerous and vicious?
So we have some nuisance dog language and some dangerous dog language that's in there. I would, we'd have to do some research about what the difference is, and I think really the backside is, is being more specific or having harsher penalties should a dog be deemed dangerous or deemed a nuisance dog. So we can look into that if that's a, if the commission wants us to do that.
And the other thing, and it sounds like it's a ways off because of the summer months coming up, but trying to come up with a, a game plan to re-implement the friends of the animal shelter and work that through, that can work for everybody.
Yep, and I think we're certainly already on the path for that, so, okay.
All right, we'll resume our regular meeting at four o'clock.
Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to go ahead and start the meeting. Welcome to the Salina City Commission meeting for February 24th, 2025. And I'll check with staff to see if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Roll call.
Mayor Lincolnz.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ivy.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
All right, all those that are able, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. On to public hearings.
Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 25-11234, vacating a utility easement on Lot 2 in between Lots 4 and 5 in Schilling subdivision number 5 to facilitate a terminal expansion at Salina Municipal Airport.
Okay, we'll officially open the meeting...or hearing, sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. This is a public hearing to consider whether a 20-foot public utility easement on the airport terminal property should be vacated. And we've kind of outlined for you on page three your report, the order of the hearing to occur. The first step we've done, which is open the public hearing. Step two is staff will present a report. Step three would be to receive any comment from the petitioner or the public. We'd be open to any questions the commissioners might have. And then you would close the public hearing and consider acting on the ordinance. But I'm sure the commissioners are aware that the airport authority has received an FAA grant and plans modifications and expansion of the airport terminal. And there is a 12-inch public water line that runs just north-south, just behind the terminal building to the west, and part of their concourse passes over it, and their proposed expansion area encroaches into that water line easement. In anticipation of that, engineers working for airport authority designed a rerouting of the water line down Bailey Road and out around from under the proposed addition area. The water line being relocated, the utility easement for it still remains in place. And so the airport authority has filed a vacation petition seeking to vacate that segment of easement that runs behind the terminal building, and by doing so, eliminating the building restrictions that this easement creates. We scheduled a public hearing for today's date. We sent the request out to all area public and franchise utility providers. With the water line being removed, no one reported having any other easement issues or utilities located there, and there were no objections received to vacating the easement. We provided some possible findings for you on page three of your report, which are incorporated into the staff, the ordinance that was prepared for your consideration. So your options are identified on page four of the report, and if you are in agreement that there'll be no inconvenience to the public, or if this easement is vacated, then you could approve ordinance 2511234, vacating that 20-foot utility easement. You could postpone consideration of this matter to a future meeting date if you feel additional information is needed, or you could deny the petition if you find it's not in the public interest to vacate the easement at this time. So this one is fairly straightforward because the major purpose of the easement was to protect the public water line, and it has been relocated, so the easement doesn't really serve a public purpose and is impeding the airport authority's plans. So I would be open to any questions commissioners might have.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Any questions?
Yep.
Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? I'll bring it back to the commission and close the public hearing.
Okay, Mayor Lincolnz, I move to approve ordinance number 25-11234, vacating the 20-foot public utility easement located on Lot 2 and along the common lot line between Lots 4 and 5 in Block 15 of Schilling subdivision number 5 in the city of Salinas, Seline County, Kansas.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Approval of ordinance number 25-11234, vacating utility easement on Lot 2 between Lots 4 and 5 in Schilling subdivision number 5 to facilitate a terminal expansion at Salina Municipal Airport. This requires a roll call, vote.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ivy.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Mayor Lincolnz.
Aye. Passes five to zero. On to consent agenda.
Item 4.1, consider approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 10th, 2025. Item 4.2, consider approval of resolution number 25-8283, appointing a member to the Salina Airport Authority. Item 4.3, consider the biennial requests for special alcohol funding from the...for the 2025-2026 funding period. Item 4.4, consider acceptance of an offered public sanitary sewer easement located outside the boundary of the Windy Creek addition to serve the new Maverick Convenience Store. And item 4.5, consider approval of a license agreement with Berg Camp Inc. for a sign located in the public right-of-way at 3040 Emulsion Drive.
Thank you. Any item on the consent agenda, any commissioners which have removed?
No.
Is there any item on the consent agenda a member of the public would like to comment on? I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda items as read.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five to zero. On to administration.
Mayor, in administration, I would like to ask that we move item 5.2 down to the bottom of the agenda, under 5.5.
Sounds like a reasonable request. Do we need a motion for that, or can we just...
That can be done at your prerogative.
I believe that's a prudent decision. Let's go ahead and do that. Thank you. 5.1.
Item 5.1, consider approval of resolutions numbered 25-8280, 25-8281, and 25-8282, authorizing and providing for improvements of main trafficways, the city's public water supply system at the Salina Municipal Airport, and the city's public water supply system and the Overlook Estates extension respectively.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. On December 9th, 2024, the City Commission approved the 2025-2029 capital improvement program. Within that program, we had several projects that are anticipated to begin in 2025, and were indicated that we would like to issue debt for those programs...for those projects. In order for the city to have the option to finance these projects utilizing general obligation bonds, the City Commission must pass resolution authorizing the use of general obligation bonds. Today's action adopts those resolutions for the projects scheduled to begin in 2025. This action does not obligate the city to the projects. That action comes back to your...for your consideration when the award...when the bids for the awards for those projects would occur. We do have three separate resolutions. The first resolution is 258280, which covers all of the street projects within the capital improvement plan, which is West Magnolia Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, as well as East Crawford Road improvements, and the Ninth and Waterwell Signal and Roundabout. The second resolution is 25821, which covers the airport water improvement project. And the third is resolution 258282, which covers the water supply at Overlook Estates. For all of these resolutions, we've identified the following options. You can adopt the resolutions as stated. You can adopt them with amendments. You can postpone consideration of any of these resolutions, or you can choose not to adopt these resolutions. Staff recommends that you choose option 1 for all of the resolutions. I can stand with questions. I also have the project managers for these projects here in attendance. If you have questions about the specific projects, we can answer those for you as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Pack?
I think these are all projects we've been discussing, so no surprises here.
All right. Any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Lincolnz, I move we approve resolution number 25-8280, authorizing and providing for improvements of re-improvement...or re-improvement of certain main trafficways within the city of Salina, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof for an amount not to exceed $16 million.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 25-8280, authorizing and providing for improvement or re-improvement of certain main trafficways within the city of Salina, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof for the...for an amount not to exceed $16 million dollars. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero.
I'm not sure your microphone's on, is it?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I wondered if we could just do all these at once, but...
Nope. Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 25-8281, authorizing and providing for improvements
for the city public water supply system, airport main improvements, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof for an amount not to exceed $5.2 million.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of resolution number 25-8281, authorizing and providing for improvements to the city public water supply system. In parentheses, airport main improvements, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof for an amount not to exceed 5200...or I'm sorry, $5,200,000. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero.
Okay, Mayor Lincolnz, I move we approve resolution number 25-8282, authorizing and providing for improvements to the city public water supply system, Overlook Estates extension, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof for an amount not to exceed $1,550,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 25-8282, authorizing and providing for improvements to the city public water supply system, Overlook Estates extension, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof for an amount not to exceed $1,550,000. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. On to 5.3.
Item 5.3, consider approval of the 2025 Conventions and Tourism Promotion Program and Cultural Grant Program budget.
Mayor Commissioners, Jacob Wood, interim city manager. This is an item...over the last couple of months, we've worked with the Chamber of Commerce to pin an agreement with them about the use of transient guest tax funds for funding convention and turisms and promotion. That agreement was approved on the 27th of January. Part of that agreement includes the process for approval of their program budget on an annual basis. They submitted that. We had several conversations about it, kind of solidified what the plans are for the CVB for 2025. That budget is attached here and includes a total program budget of $1,013,012 for CVB programs, $400,000 for a community marketing program, and then $150,000 for cultural and arts marketing. That's a total of $1.5 million, with 1.1 of that being funded by transient guest tax. The program budget does include a spin-down of $200,000 or $213,000 from the reserve fund that's on the books with the chamber. The agreement requires that they would provide quarterly reports to the city. We'll review those and then make payments or disbursements upon review of quarterly reports. This has no impact on our 2025 budget. We already budget for CVB funding, and it just falls right in line with what we previously budgeted, so it shouldn't have any impact at all. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions. Renee Drexler, the president CEO of the chamber, is here as well. The options that you have today are to approve the 2025 Convention and Tourism Program budget as presented. You could approve it with amendments or ask for additional postponement of the agreement. So with that, stand for questions. Renee's here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any questions?
The only question I have, I guess, is do we have any idea as far as hiring and getting the cultural arts regional marketing program up and running? It's probably hard to hire anybody before you got this approved, I understand, so...
Afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Renee Drexler with Salina Area Chamber. So the cultural arts regional marketing program is the one that had currently existed under...
That's not the one I meant. You knew which one I meant.
You're talking community marketing. Okay, just making sure. All right, so community marketing. Our hope is, I mean, we already do have that proposal written up and included in that was a job description for the director of marketing. And so as soon as this is approved, we do plan on putting that...posting that out and putting that up for hiring. And then, once that person gets hired in, the plan is to have them in place and sort of get them oriented, oriented, and then they could start hiring of the two other positions.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any member of the public like to comment on this item? And I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move we approve the 2025 Convention and Tourism Program, Promotion Program, and Cultural Grant Program budget as presented and attached.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the 2025 Conventions and Tourism Program, Promotional Program, and Cultural Grant Program budget as presented and attached. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five to zero. On to 5.4.
Item 5.4, consider authorizing the mayor to sign amendment number 1 to the interlocal agreement between the city and Seline County regarding the animal shelter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. Both this item and the next item are essentially what I would describe as an administrative cleanup. They're updating agreements and practices that are already in place. 5.4, which is the one that we're current looking at, is the interlocal agreement between the city and Seline County regarding the animal shelter. As you saw in the presentation before, since 2014, the city has been running the animal shelter and has been providing services both to residents of the city as well as to the county. This amendment does not change anything in the agreement itself. What it does is it removes two items from the exhibit, which is incorporated with the agreement. And what it does is it removes euthanasia requests and private cremation. What this does is, since 2017, euthanasia requests have no longer been undertaken at the animal shelter, nor has private cremation. When I first started looking at this, it gets a little confusing because what's private and public, but essentially what...what they have discontinued is the practice of cremating and then returning the ashes. And so those services are no longer available, and they have not been since 2020. Now, they do still do disposal of animals that have been surrendered to the animal shelter, and essentially by removing these two items, we're just updating the agreement to reflect those practices which have been in place for a number of years. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Any questions? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? And I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize you to sign amendment number 1, modifying...
Sorry. Move to authorize you to sign amendment number 1, modifying Exhibit A to the interlocal cooperation agreement regarding the animal shelter.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Authorize the mayor to sign amendment number 1, modifying Exhibit A to the interlocal cooperation agreement regarding the animal shelter. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five to zero. And on to 5.5.
Item 5.5, consider authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Seline County regarding plan review and building inspection services.
Commissioners, much like the earlier 5.4, this is an update to a pre-existing agreement. The difference between this one and the one that you just voted on is this inserts actually the fact that the fire marshal and the fire department is officially involved within the agreement. They have been involved in this process for quite some time. We are merely updating the agreement to reflect that participation. In this case, it is also different because rather than an amendment, this is actually a superseding agreement. Kind of went back and forth on how to do this, wasn't certain. Since this is actually inserting words into the agreement, we went ahead and adopted it as a new agreement and then had it supersede the previous one. It's not just removing items from the exhibit as it was in the animal shelter one. So that's why there is a slight difference there. But the net effect is the same, is to update the agreement to reflect current practices which have been in place for quite some time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hennessy?
I know we have some requirements where we're dealing within three miles of the city limits. This is for the entire county?
Yes.
Not just that three mile radius?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I see the word, and so does the building official and the fire marshal have to sign off, or is it...
They have to be part of that review process, which is basically they've been involved in for quite some time, so it won't change their role. It just basically codifies it in the agreement to reflect that.
Okay, any member of the public wish to comment on this item? And I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Lincolnz, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the updated interlocal agreement for plan review and building inspection services with Seline County.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the updated interlocal agreement for plan review and building inspection services with Seline County. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes five to zero.
Item 5.2, conduct a discussion on the selection of an executive search firm to assist with finding city manager candidates.
Ms. Fisher is not present.
Mayor, if I may, in Ms. Fisher's absence, I've been asked to assume the staff role, if that's...meet your approval?
Yes, it does. And if it doesn't, what do we do?
Well, that's a good question.
Just wanted to ask, see if you had an answer.
The...as you know, you have received proposals from nine different... The, as you know, you have received proposals from nine different executive search firms. Ms. Fisher's and my collective recommendation, as reflected in the blue sheet, is that you first address the process by which you might wish to first possibly narrow those under consideration, and ultimately, of course, identifying if any one of the organizations is someone you wish to potentially enter into a contract for services, that upon identification of that primary choice, that I would appreciate the opportunity to visit with you in executive session to determine whether there are any points of negotiation to be pursued with that firm. If there are none, then that's certainly okay, and we go forward with those development of that contract. If there are, then it's a matter of who you wish to have communicate those, whether that be a representative, the mayor, or a representative commissioner, or staff, or however you wish to proceed, is up to you. Once you have identified the process by which you wish to examine these nine applicants, you would then, of course, move to the substantive evaluation, which, because you are not speaking of a prospective employee of the city, any consideration or discussion of their relative merits must take place in this open meeting, or in an open meeting. So now, certainly the opportunity to identify preferences among yourselves, whether that be with polling of some sort, that's certainly permissible, some ranking possibly, but in doing so, we must be sure that any opinions expressed in the form of that ranking are identifiable to the Commissioner indicating that rank, so as to be sure that, under the open meetings law, there is a prohibition against, as you might expect, any secret balloting. That certainly undermines the open meetings aspect. So whether that be verbal or in writing, that is certainly an option available to you as you conduct your discussions, but it's on the basis of those ground rules. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but as you can tell, this is all you all, and I think you're in a position to proceed as you see fit.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Binkson. Any Commissioner like to... Ball rolling, so to speak?
I guess two of us have done this before, and I'm bad to say that my memory's not as good as I wish it was to remember exactly how we did this, but I don't believe we had nearly this many companies apply for this, you know, helping us with the search. I kind of see us, and again, this is just in my eyes, he talks about ranking, I kind of see us trying to get this, in my eyes, down to two or three companies. I'm not sure we can get it down to one today. And part of that would be, I would like to do an interview with the company that's going to do the, help us with the search. And part of that is, I think it's as important that we're comfortable with that individual, and the individual we would interview would be the person that we're actually doing, helping us with the search, not their head of, headhunter that's not the person we're doing, because I think we have to have a real comfort with that individual that's helping us to do the search. So I don't know how we go about getting two, two or three companies. I have a couple that I would remove, that I would remove, and I guess I could throw those out there to see if there's any consensus. At least we get it down to five instead of nine or something, I don't know.
Fire away.
Again, all these companies, I think, if you look at it, they do things in a similar way. They come, you know, they want to know what your community has to offer, what you're looking for. They're going to put together information to go out and solicit city managers. They're going to help you with interviews and so on and so forth. So I felt like the League of Kansas Municipalities, from looking at some of their work, they don't have quite as large of umbrella as some of the other companies, and it looked to me like they dealt with a lot of the smaller communities in the state of Kansas. So for one reason, I kind of had those off my list.
I liked the thought of going with them, just because of who they are, but then I had the same feeling you did with the, they're only dealing with very small communities in relation to ours.
Then, so, that's my first one. The other one was Everstrive, and part of that was, as I looked at their material, I saw them as being almost more of a consulting-type entity than a firm that would help us. And I did notice that they did pair up with Omni, and I believe that's who Mr. Scrag, who Warrensburg used, but I still didn't feel comfortable with their background, and also I was not, wasn't as strong, I didn't feel Omni Human Resource Solutions was as strong as some of the others. So those are the three that I would remove off of my list initially.
Seems reasonable. Well, I have a list. I'm not going to go through so much the ones that I'm not considering, but one factor I looked at is, a few of them is just front and center, their big premise was their commitment to D E I. And I said, I'm sorry, we're not going there. So I have reached out to some of the references that these firms provided in their packet, and I do want to shout out to Ms. Fisher and her staff for putting together this whole binder that was hand-delivered in a terrible cold night. So I have got feedback from representatives who have used and appointed people from the search, and these companies range from very, very small to extremely large nationwide. And I have landed on one that is kind of in the middle of G P S, government pro-professional services. And they have a history of searches from, in our region, their, people are familiar with Kansas, and I'm sure they know Salina. And I am not comfortable with someone in California or New Jersey recruiting and trying to find a good fit for Salina. So yeah, I, and this Baker Tilly is impressive, and I think they would be a good choice, but they are one of these huge, huge firms. So I narrowed it down to Baker Tilly, Omni, and my number one choice is G P S.
One of my, that was, one of my top-ranked ones was G P S, and they're the only one that had a 24-month guarantee, that if your person you pick leaves for any reason, that they would conduct the search over again at cost. Someone else had that at one year, but said if you hired within, it didn't count either, but I think that was the Baker Tilly one. Pricewise, they were all similar. I don't think, I don't really see that necessarily being an issue, but just the materials they sent us, you know, going through, it seemed to me, G P S and the Baker Tilly were the most, were the highest on my list. I don't know. Now we've switched over to what we like for eliminating them.
Well, actually, the three, certainly, I'd say two and a half of the ones that Commissioner Hoppit excluded, I agreed with him. And, you know, if you can get a list of nine down to four, it's a much more manageable position. You know, cost is not going to be an issue. I mean, we're looking for a long-term CEO of a $200 million operation. $10,000 difference in our recruiting cost is negligible. The size of the organization sometimes means, you know, if they're a little bigger, they may actually have more contacts. You know, there are small towns in Massachusetts, and, you know, some states, people tend to leave and go to others, and let's face it, Kansas is a state, that probably happens more than people in someplace else choose to come here, but you don't know what's out there unless you can reach them. The League did seem to work with very small communities, and we need someone who really would be on the cusp of managing a city, you know, the size of a Topeka or even Kansas City, Kansas, because we function as a much larger city than our population. I will respectfully disagree with Commissioner Longbine about D E I. I think you were reading Senator Marshall's article a little bit too closely. D E I does not mean that you appoint someone who doesn't deserve the job. What it means is you don't exclude them or disqualify them because of some personal trait they have. You know, no one wants anyone not qualified for the job, no matter what their background is, taking the spot. But it means you don't close your eye just because a person happens to have a certain gender or ethnic background, because we don't know who's going to be best for the city. You know, so I actually took that as a positive for some of these companies. Two of them actually advertised what percentage of their candidates would typically be considered, included under that D E I umbrella. But it did not say that how many of those became the finalists or accepted the job, but it at least says they were considered. And we need to consider anyone who's good. I read Baker Tilly, of course, that was the first one, because it's alphabetically the first, and I said, wow, this is really good, until I read the second one, and I said, wow, this one's really good. I got to the third, and I was ready to skip over that one, other than for the fact that they worked with Warrensburg, and I figured, well, if they got Max Scrag out of here, eh, at least go back and read it a second time, but then they come down here and find out that Omni also worked for Warrensburg. So I'm beginning to think the problem with, wasn't selecting one of the companies, the problem may have been with the city. I don't know. Hope no one from Warrensburg is listening. Sorry, Mike, you probably are listening. But, but I, you know, my top three, well, my top four, Raftellus, Omni, Colin Banzinger, and Baker Tilly. I don't think we're going to make a bad choice out of any of these, because certainly if we interview the group that we think is the finalist, if we don't get that good vibe, we can say, well, thanks for coming to the interview.
Give me yours again, I'm sorry. You had Baker Tilly?
Baker Tilly, Colin Banzinger, Omni, and Raftellus, the one after Omni.
This is going to be fun, because we're all different.
Right.
It's kind of like when my wife and I pick a place to eat, we pick three, and if we end on the same one, that's where we go, so it's maybe. So you were okay with Omni? That's the one that really didn't have much experience?
And I, they were like a, they got a B or a C after the number. What had me a little concerned about them was, they seemed to do a lot more than just focusing on cities and municipal stuff. I didn't know if that was truly their main business focus or not.
And I, and...
Now, they're based in Overland Park, Kansas, so I'm assuming they have to have some idea of what Missouri, Kansas, Nebraska, Iowa, you know, what those states would be.
You know, Baker Tilly, I don't know if they merged or they purchased Springsteen Waters, is it Springstead? And that's who we used last time.
All right.
Baker Tilly.
Right. None of these names looks familiar.
And that's the reason, and I didn't, and I'm, and again, this office could be completely different, but I didn't feel that maybe we got as wide a spread of candidates as I was hoping for. So that, that's one of my, I was kind of leaning towards, and I, Baker Tilly, I love their, I love their material, you know, I just don't know, I just...
Which one did you like, again?
Yeah, none of you had.
Okay. Give me another option. I have, I have three lists on to the sheet.
Well, I guess what I liked about Omni was, as you said, they're based in Overland Park, and...
I had, I had Natalie prepare this email that we, that she sent out to us, because I wanted to know what companies are actually dealing with city manager positions, because, I mean, you know, we can use it, you know, we, some of these companies will go out and do a, you know, find a Debbie Pack for you, they'll find us an civil engineer for you and stuff. So I was looking for those that were more, you know, that it, and again, I was kind of leaning towards S G R, and I know they're bigger companies, but they still have, they're, you know, they've been in the Colorado, Texas, you know, all around us, S G R, M G T, and, you know, I could go with Colin Banzinger, you know, or even M G T. I mean, some of them have not filled any positions in Kansas, but they have in Nebraska, Missouri, Iowa, you know, that I consider to be Midwest states, kind of like ours, so...
So we're overlapping on Colin Banzinger?
It's one of them.
One of them, okay. What were your other ones?
But the only thing I didn't like about them is they are out of Florida.
Right.
That was the only thing that, that was a drawback, and if you looked at a lot of theirs, a lot of their, their people that they had placed were in the Florida.
Right, in fact, that was my last comment, that was my drawback.
So that would probably, so I was probably leaning towards, or towards S G R and M G T were probably my first two.
Commissioner Longbine, remind me, what were the, you had G P S, and what was the other pick you had?
G P S, Omni, and the Baker Tilly.
Thank you.
What was Commissioner Hoppix's pick, again?
S G R, M G T, is that correct?
Yeah.
And then you also mentioned Baker Tilly.
Yeah, Baker Tilly, I liked the material, I'd want to...
Do some homework on that.
I would want to interview who's going to be doing our, our search, I guess.
And Baker Tilly did have a lot of Kansas positions that they filled.
Okay.
Well, and I can tell you, I spoke to the, let me show it to you. It's a lot of information, it really is.
Well, and the reason, I guess...
...and G P S.
Okay. Thank you, sir. S G R. I got acquainted with the mayor of Shawnee, Kansas. They feature their promo material for Shawnee, and they hired a new city manager in Shawnee, which was a warranty job from the city manager that did not work out.
Well, you know, one thing I also like about Baker Tilly, I noticed they have placed managers in several of the Washington, D.C. suburban cities, and the cities that are... managers in several of the Washington DC suburban cities, in the cities that are, you know, on the move, doing well, as well as Kansas cities of different size. It suggests to me that they're comfortable working in different environments. I would assume they're large enough that whoever recruits for, you know, the DC to Boston corridor is not the person who recruits for the center of the country or the West Coast.
And they're a huge firm, and, well, I believe they each already assigned people who are fairly local.
I can find, I don't know how we do this, I can find pros and cons to each one of them. Like I said, I was able to eliminate three. And, you know, it's kind of a, this is, I hate using this word, a crap shoot, is the who they have and who, you know, what connections, when they throw their umbrella out, who do they, do they draw in? And again, I don't know, I guess that's why you want to interview them, to see how they go about looking for candidates for your community. And that's why I think we need to interview at least two or three.
I agree.
I agree. And I'm sure there's overlap.
Yeah.
I'm sure that, you know, they're casting out the same net, so to speak, and they're going to.
And the other, and the other thing I asked, the other thing I asked Ms. Fisher about is, and she, I don't think got any answers, is do any of these represent individuals looking for jobs? Because as a, as a city manager, as a deputy city manager, I'm guessing you can go to one of these and say, hey, I'm open to moving, and so your name's on a list? And that's, I don't have a problem with that, but I do want to know if we hire one of these companies and they bring us somebody, I want to know whether they were on their list, because they may be double-dipping us. I mean, that sounds bad.
No, it makes sense, though.
But I just want to make sure.
One of these, I think one of the first three specifically stated that they don't.
I think it was Baker Tilly, but.
They don't represent.
Said they don't represent.
The candidate, yeah.
And the fact that they do might be a benefit, that they have a list of candidates, too, so. So we're no further along we were ten minutes ago.
Well, actually, I mean, certain, certain names have been repeated more often than others, and certain ones have not been mentioned at all. So I think we're closer. I mean, we can do a thumbs up, thumbs down, absolutely not, not over my dead body type approach to it. All I can say is I'm glad we don't have to select department heads, that the city manager has to do that.
So Mayor Lenkowitz, where are you at?
Well, I kind of was gravitating towards GPS, but, you know, Baker Tilly, and for what it's worth, I'm, you know, I'm sure everybody else is probably doing the same thing, but there's a commonality where it looks like quite a few of us have Baker Tilly kind of as a possibility. And Commissioner Davis, I think I got all your picks, but was that one of yours as well?
Yep.
Okay. So I mean, that definitely, to me, there's probably merit to that. And I think we talked about the little asterisk on that one, like doing a little more homework on it. Baker Tilly? Is it, it just, well, I think as far as there's an association with the previous search, if memory serves, or maybe my notes are correct if I'm wrong.
I think they were purchased by or merged with one of the two.
Okay. Yeah, I'll check the accuracy of my notes here.
The only, the only thing, and again, with Raffity, Raffetillis, or whatever it is, is they do a lot of, you know, housing directors, I saw a lot of different types besides city managers. The only thing I couldn't tell with a lot of these is the size of the communities they were dealing with. They didn't give populations, although they did have like Louisville in there, and Yuma and Boulder. So we know they do larger ones, so, again.
And I had looked at that, populations to comparable to Salina. And one of them that I reached out to and got feedback was Grand Island, Nebraska, very comparable to Salina. And they were very happy with GPS.
Okay. You said you spoke to somebody that did the Shawnee hire, which agency was that, do you remember? Was that the?
The bad hire, SGR.
Okay.
Now, was that contact with the person who was hired, or the group of people who were doing the hiring?
That was the mayor.
So he was the candidate?
No.
No, so he was hiring, he was leading a search for someone else?
Right.
Okay.
They had a search, hired a city manager, their recommendation, and it didn't work out, and they had to do it all over again.
He didn't give the reason why it didn't work out? And if he did, probably he shouldn't say it out loud anyway.
It's national news.
Okay.
Shawnee, I remember, was a pretty squared away community, so that's why I asked. But I think they're, I think they've grown considerably. I think they're up to almost 70,000 people now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I guess the question would be, where do we go from here? At this point, we've eliminated.
I think we got consensus on GPS.
Okay. We've eliminated Kansas League of Municipalities, correct? Is that, is there consensus on that?
Yeah, well, for me, yeah.
Okay.
I think there's consensus on Baker Tilly.
Being a yes or no?
Say.
Being affirmative?
I thought it was a yes, from what I was gathering.
Yeah.
That was my, okay.
I see some introspective minds sitting over on that far wall there, and just, what have you all heard us say?
I'm staying out of it. I've actually had experience with all of you, but I'm staying out of it. Or have you said yes to Baker Tilly?
Yeah, I think, my only observation is, I think you're doing very well, and.
This is doing well?
Yeah, you're doing great. Seriously, seriously, you started with nine, and, you know, I think you're doing real well. It's, probably feels like longer up there, but given what's involved here, you're doing great.
Feels circuitous, to say the least.
And that's what I indicated to the people I reached out to in reference, that we've got to get this right. If we don't get this right, then.
Well, a good candidate, we're going to spot, probably no matter who recruits them. And.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, we just want a company that gives us the best option, so.
So Baker Tilly.
I guess we could, should we go through each one and raise our hand if we're okay with it, and then get it down from there? I mean, I don't, I don't know.
It's, I was trying to, at first, I was trying to hit it from what, who we could eliminate. And so far, all I've got is League of Municipalities.
And I, and again, I know there was some, I think Everstrive, and like I said, Everstrive and Omni, to me, were kind of a no, just.
Okay.
And again, you don't, I know Commissioner Davis maybe disagreed. I think the Everstrive, like I said, they're out of Independence, Missouri. I think the two gals that run it look like they're good, but I just don't see where they've had, I don't, I'm concerned they don't have.
Well, I agree with taking those three off the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it, Mayor, if this is helpful?
I'm open to whatever.
Well, am I correct that the thought is you do want to interview?
I do.
A subset?
Yes, absolutely.
Is it fair to say that any candidate that three of you wish to interview, you should probably interview?
That's a fair point.
If that helps you at least get it down. Now, that may leave you with more than you wish to interview, but, and then you go from there, but.
That's okay, because, okay.
Let's just go through and see how many hands we get on each one of them. I mean, have we done?
That's good.
Okay, so let's, let's start with Baker Tilly. So that's a, that'd be an affirmative for Baker Tilly. Colin Banzinger and Associates, or Banzinger, I may be butchering that. Anybody have an opinion on that particular firm?
If you want to interview, raise your hand, I guess.
They were impressive, but they were very Florida-based.
Yes, that's why I didn't have my mind.
Okay, so.
We eliminated another one?
Yes, sir.
Where could us go?
Everstrive Solutions. Government Pros or GPS, I would be worth looking into.
Is that a yes?
So it's.
I was, I was neutral on them, but I, like, I could really tell that much difference between them, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, put them, give you four and a half.
We'll do a, we'll do an affirmative on that, so.
You don't get a half O, but.
Okay, so that League of Kansas Municipalities? That's a negative. Omni, Human Resource Solutions.
I kind of liked them. It's two of us.
And now it's starting to run together, that's the.
Omni is the one that was worked with EverServe, or is it EverStrive?
Oh, they're the ones that put us in Johnson County.
Yeah, but they do, if you look at what they've done, roles filled, there's a lot of things, but very few, I say, city managers, just a little bit.
So they're not getting a loud round of support.
Well, and again, I mean, not to be overly persnickety, because I understand these things happen, but I'm looking at the cover letter, and it's.
It's about five pages.
We're not even, they don't even have us in the right county. They have us in Johnson County.
So Johnson County.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, next.
It doesn't make me feel very important.
We might be getting annexed.
So our next one, anybody know the pronunciation on that one?
Rattle. Just Raftellus.
Raftellus, okay, yeah, that is a T. Okay, yeah. Raftellus.
Maybe the only one, but I like them, yeah.
Well.
They're another huge company.
And then Strategic Government Resources, or SGR.
Did we vote on Raffit, whatever?
Well, if you wanted to vote again, we could, because I, maybe we blew through that kind of quick.
I mean, so what did we do on Omni? We said.
We kind of decided that'd be a negative.
MGT was a no, correct?
Yes.
Um.
So should I, I get a take on Raftellus again?
I gotta remember, now I gotta look at their brooch, their stuff, yeah. Again, like I said, they all do similar things, they all have similar qualities.
I'm sorry, everyone, for this being so kind of arduous.
They've done city manage, I mean, they've done stuff in Udora, Tondaloxi, Grand Junction, Colorado. They're also, they're all over. I would be okay with at least interviewing them.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
With who?
Raftellus.
Raftellus.
Yeah, affirmative on that. Okay.
I could find in their list of services where they even said they did city manager stuff.
It's right here, all this, if you go back here.
They do have some references of city managers.
Yeah, right back here, if you go, there was a whole page, well, there's, this is right here.
Their firm capabilities.
Recent executive search, if you go through here, this is all theirs.
Yeah, so when you look at their firm capabilities, you got one little line down here that says council governance, that's. Yeah, I know what, I know what it says back there, I'm just saying. They have done it, they've shown it down.
Yeah, they've done. And I know SGR is big, but I kind of liked their, I kind of liked their information and their, their history also.
I'd be in favor of that, and that's, that just, that brings us to four total.
Yeah.
I mean, so that's, we've narrowed some things down, because that leaves us with, so it's a yes on Baker Tilly, a yes on GPS, a yes on Raftellus, and then SGR.
SGR.
Okay, affirmative?
That's four.
That's four, I think that's fine.
I think four is, yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's it, we're, I think we've at least, we've knocked over 50% of those.
So, do we talk to you, or do we wait to talk to Ms. Fisher about setting up times for interviews?
Excuse me, do you know when Natalie's back? I don't.
I do not know.
Friday.
Oh, not till Friday.
You know, Natalie's been the contact, obviously, but depending upon how you all wish to keep moving, the, I think Natalie's in a position where we could certainly communicate with her, is that?
I don't.
Fair to say?
I thought she was on a cruise. Yeah, I, I'm okay waiting till she gets back. I mean, I don't think we're, I mean, it's not like we're in crisis mode. I mean, we have staff in place now that's been here and running things, so I just sit and wait for.
Just don't quit, Sean.
But, but yeah, I think everything's, I mean, we're running smooth. I don't see any, I don't want to do any of this in a knee-jerk reaction, so I'd like to get Natalie back and let her set up times and work through this with us.
Should we offer her one of our off-Mondays afternoons? I mean, if she could get, you know, four of them in a row, I guess 45 minutes for each one.
I'd say, oh, we don't need 45.
30?
Well, that's what I wanted to bring up, you know, through this process, do we need to just kind of plan on some special meetings?
Hoping we could do it all in one meeting.
For this?
For the year.
Yes, yeah.
But when we do the interviews, are we going to do it as a group in open session or individually?
That's, that's why we hire somebody, and they're going to, between them and.
No, I'm talking about interviewing these firms.
Oh, yeah, we have to do it in open session, am I not correct?
If you said as a committee of the whole, as you are today, certainly that would need to be in an open session.
Then.
I would think, now this, there's some legal in this, and I'm trying not to stray out of my lane, the dilemma you're in, if you try to individually interview them, or somehow have that private conversation, you run the risk of loss in the translation, as you all might try to relate to each other what was said, or what your impressions were. So this is not a strict legal viewpoint, but I would think you would find that to have that opportunity to ask those questions and get those answers collectively is probably going to be the more manageable circumstance.
So we interviewed the four of them, and again, I, it's horrible, I don't remember how we did this last time. So we interviewed the four of them in open session or in executive session, do we go in and discuss which one we liked? Because if you do it out here, it seems like we're already telling them, we're going to do it with them, and we need to, you know, if we're going to negotiate a contract, we're going to have them do everything, we're going to have them do this portion? How does that all work?
Well, I think when you're still in the phase. Well, I think when you're still in the phase of narrowing down to whichever firm you collectively choose to contract with, up until that point, the discussion needs to be in the public session. Because you are discussing the relative merits and expressing your opinions about those, which are understandably, it's not always so comfortable doing that in the public session, but it is still, again, what, what, the distinction that enables you to, in fact, in this case, ultimately interview city manager candidates. Once you get to the level of where you're dealing with the person you're considering hiring as a city employee, as city manager, then their private interests attach. It's actually their privacy that is being protected as the basis for your having that executive session interview with that individual who is a prospective employer, employee. Up to that point, you're not dealing with a prospective employee, you are trying to narrow the field as to who you might wish to contract with, that all needs to be public. Once you've identified that party, then you're potentially, if there are issues to be negotiated, you're able in executive session to collectively identify your legal position as to those negotiations. And an agreement either results or it doesn't, depending on how those conversations go. So, that, I think, is the, the progression as far as the legal environment that you're in at each step of the way.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you for clarifying that, that's. Well, the transparency component of that, I think, you know, as far as picking out this, this agency, hopefully the public appreciates that, and then go from there. As far as maybe a more measured, less rushed approach for today would be, would be better, so we can wait on Ms. Fisher.
And that, and that gives us time to each come up with two, three, or four questions, because in thirty minutes, we really need to be prepared so we, you know, get the information that we want, so it's not a thirty-minute soliloquy by the person trying to get the job.
Very valid point, and you'll pardon us if we, we defer to, to you and Commissioner Hoppe's expertise from the last search, because I think it's gonna be very valuable.
Obviously, we don't remember a lot, so. It's not funny.
It's a good thing we got some commissioners under sixty.
Right. You're right.
All right, so, assuming since no action needed, we just really need to, uh. I mean, do you need anything, direction from us at this point, or is it pretty much?
Well, I think, I suppose for the minutes, it might be good, Mayor, for you just to repeat what I believe was the consensus reached.
Okay.
So.
So based on my notes, and please correct me if I'm wrong, fellow commissioners, but we have Baker Tilly, Government Pros, also known as GPS, we have Rattelus, and Strategic Government Resources, also known as SGR.
I have my book.
So is that, we have a consensus on that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Outstanding. Is that all you need, sir?
The only thing that comes to my mind, and this is strictly a question, as to whether you all wish to have an opportunity to match notes, so to speak, in a public setting, as to the questions you wish to ans- the questions you wish to ask each of the candidate firms.
Well, I think it would be proper to allow the firms to do their five-minute presentation and then develop questions from there. Squeezing four firms in in one session would be a lot, I think.
Well, if you give them thirty minutes, you're gonna get a twenty-five-minute re-presentation of this. If there are things that I think that are unique to Salina, that we wanna make sure that they will be looking for, we kinda need to.
I think by telling them we want an interview and a little presentation to give them a little time to do a little homework on Salina.
I, I would say we do all four of them, back to back to back to back, and do thirty minutes, give them five or ten minutes to, to give their speech, their spill, and then we could ask questions. I think it would be advantageous, I think Mr. Binkson said that we maybe look through this, again, now that there's only four, it's a lot better than what we were at, and maybe submit questions to Natalie? Because we may have the same, and we may be able to come up with a list of questions, because you wanna make sure you're asking, I think, each party kinda the same questions, or you're gonna get, you know, I think you're gonna wanna have kind of a set of questions that we see how each one of them responds to.
Yeah, that was my primary point.
Yeah. Because we get.
If each one of us sent four or five questions to Natalie, she can compile them, it probably should be overlapping, she can present that list to us, and if we need to narrow it down.
Okay.
So once we get the logistics works out, do we wanna look at a special session to do this?
I'd be open to that.
Yep.
I think that'd be best.
Come up with fresh minds, know where the business to take care of.
Right.
So, consistency with the questions, or.
For the.
I think it sounds like we've.
I suppose the only other thing, if, assuming Natalie is able to promptly initiate these contacts upon her return, do you want to suggest to them when that would be, that you expect them to appear?
All right, Ms. Prime.
Yes, Council, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Removed.
There's a motion and a second to come out of executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the meeting is back in session at four eleven PM. Mayor Potem, yes, one.
Motion made, seconded and carried, that the City Attorney's Office, in consultation with the city manager, be authorized, certain authority, to engage in settlement negotiations in the matter of birds and bees.
Yeah, let's go ahead and take a ten-minute recess and resume.
V zero three zero one, and to take all steps necessary, including the.
Do we get it? Is, are they pick, is somebody picking that up on television?
We got a security breach.
By Mayor Potem.
Yeah, it's another city.
Yeah.
They're now behind us, whoever they are.
I think there's somebody on Zoom who's not muted.
Oh, copy. Makes sense. So how do we, can we rectify that problem?
Five minutes.
Okay, you have, take your time, you're good. Thank you, sir.
Question is, can they hear us? Okay, we were looking for a date.
Well, we're.
I think we let Natalie, well, we'll talk about, we gotta, we need to talk when we get back. That was weird.
So are we?
It looks like the seventeenth. Of March.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a Monday.
Looks like we're still on air, so we can still have hot mics, by the way. Sure we're. Can you copy that?
We'll find out Fresno, California, or someplace.
Hold for the vote.
Is that a real, uh, picture?
Here we go, we're in Texas, huh?
Where is that city in that picture?
El Paso.
Yeah.
Well, that picture there, where is?
That's where that video on the dog greeters came from.
Well, I don't know if we can resume until, because I, Fisher said we might have been reconvened until.
Five minutes.
Five twenty-five.
Brahms had a downtown place I could go get a cherry sundae real quick.
Did we specifically recess?
Brahms had a downtown.
That's, that's what I said on the.
Location I could run and get a cherry, cherry sundae right now.
Okay. So yeah, you can take us off-air until five twenty-five, please. So, yeah, you can take us off air until five twenty-five, please. All right, we're back in session. And we're on to development business.
Mayor Potem, was there any desire to attempt to identify a day and time as Natalie begins those contacts with? I'm not saying you have to, I just wanted to be sure that you all had an opportunity to determine that, if you choose to. Or if not, that's your prerogative, of course.
I guess it depends on how much time those, those corporations need to prep. I mean, I don't know if this following Monday would be, would be too soon, or do we need to allot them more time?
Yeah, I don't think Natalie's back till Friday. I'd just, I'd just leave it Natalie's court, Ms. Fishers, and let her get in touch with us. And as I told you, it doesn't have to be a Monday, I don't think. I mean, it's a special, specially called meeting, so we could do it a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, correct?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
And we're wanting to get all four at the same time, correct? I mean, the odds of getting four different firms like that, I'd say the first time you can get all four of them together, we all jump in with it.
It's a fair point. Okay, yeah, let's just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
If we could avoid it Tuesday, though.
Okay, copy that.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Sorry about that, back to development business, six point one.
Would you like a motion?
We did that as three point one, didn't we?
Do we need a motion to affirm that?
No, that's.
Just a direction to staff?
Yes, I think that's fine.
Okay.
And if I may, I do commend you all on getting through that in the fashion you did. That was, that's obviously very important work, and I hope everyone's comfortable with where you ended up.
Thank you for, you're giving us too much credit, maybe, but, but thank you for the kind words. And actually, my mistake, we, that's the other agenda, isn't it? Is that the modified agenda? So, we're just on to other business.
Yep.
Any commissioner have other business? Okay, on to citizens forum. Any citizen like to make a comment? Please keep your comments within three minutes. Please and thank you. And just need your name and address.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Brandon Sokol. I live in Manhattan, Kansas, 2317 Candlewood Drive, apartment eleven, six-six-five-zero-three is our zip code. I'm the facility director at the Prairie Paws Manhattan Animal Shelter. Just wanted to come express our organization's interest in partnering with Salina to operate the animal shelter. We specialize in this industry, and we do operate the Manhattan Animal Shelter and the Emporia Animal Shelter under government contracts. Those facilities are still owned by the, the city, and we operate them. I think we meet and exceed their scope of services and their expectations. It's mutually beneficial, I think, for the city and for us. We're trying to really scale up our organization, there's a lot of benefits from increasing our size, and we're starting to realize that. But we're looking to acquire some more animal shelters to partner with. I did want to just kind of briefly mention that, you know, we operate at a high capacity. Like, we very much feel that if we have empty kennels, we're not serving, serving our, our goals. So, you know, if we got empty space, we're bringing animals in from our other shelters. So, we are always operating at a high capacity, and our length of stay across the three shelters is twenty days for both cats and dogs. And our live release rate was ninety-five point two percent for our three shelters. If you're interested in learning more about our organization, we do post all our reports and our stats on our website, prairiepaws.org. Briefly, I also want to make comment to Commissioner Hoppe about Emporia having a dog for over a year. We actually acquired that animal shelter in August of 2024, and in doing so, we actually acquired some of the animals that they had. And some of those dogs had been there for years. And in the, the second week of January, we celebrated adopting out the final animal that we had acquired in that acquisition. So, again, our length of stay is very low, we operate at a high capacity, and we're very interested in becoming a partner. Our lawyer is on Zoom, or had been on Zoom, to try and facilitate any further discussion. So, thank you for your time, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tyler Sartain, Ottawa County. I didn't plan on speaking, so, shooting from the hip. But just to clarify a few things, I am one of the admins that run the Salinas against BSL, which is the group that's trying to lift the ban. We had the petition going on, and again, just to reiterate that it did fail because of a technicality. We are told some wrong information about when people could register to vote and sign in the same day, because Kansas is not a register voting the same day. So, all the names that we have, all of them that are in my closet waiting to re-sign again, we'll have those up and going on May third. And I would encourage you, come sit with us on a Saturday and actually talk and see people. We've spent a year just sitting outside in the crazy Kansas weather. And I can assure you, we've had people pro, anti, they don't care. We've had stories, good and bad, we've had people that were attacked by dogs, specifically pits, and they're like, it was an accident. We've had people attacked by other dogs that have had worse injuries, and they showed us. And they're like, it was an accident. And again, we want you guys involved, and we are really grateful for the discussions that have been happening. Even if things don't move at this level, we are still active in trying to lift it. Because again, one, for personal rights, I don't think it's right for us to say, hey, you can't own something, because again, there's a lot more other dogs out there that have potential. I have videos when I was delivering, I've been attacked probably about five times from shepherds. I almost was ripped apart by a couple cane corsos. You could see the scratch marks and teeth marks in one of the vehicles I had to drive. So, again, it doesn't matter the dog, it's just, again, one of those things, we need to move forward to help the shelter, get people's rights back. And I do invite you, we're gonna start this on May the third, we're gonna have a pity party in the park. So, we hope you guys will join and share in the discussion. And, I mean, I like the ideas we were talking about, seeing the Junction City ordinances on dangerous dogs. I think that's really well-written, the felon thing, if you're a violent drug offender, not having one of those dogs. I think that's a great start, because again, it's a stigma, and when people get a hold of dogs and they treat them poorly, bad things happen. And we do want to say that our condolences and thoughts and prayers are with the family in Wichita. That's a, it's a tragedy, and there are a lot of unanswered things and things that we don't know about. So, we can't feed into the stigma, or just, just feed into anything except for our thoughts and prayers. So, thank you for your time.
Deborah Corrales. I gave you guys each one of these. This dog was adopted out of Junction City when their appeal came, repeal came through. He was there a hundred and twenty-three days. In there, you will also find letters from recommendations from Prairie Paws Animal Shelters. And I'd like to bring you to this list of the euthanized dogs. These dogs, twenty-four, I believe, five thousand one hundred and fifty-six days combined these dogs spent in the animal shelter. At twelve dollars a day, that's sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's not fixing them, that's not vaccinating them, that's not medical attention, that's the twelve dollars they charge you when they pick up your dog. Two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight man-hours spent just walking those dogs fifteen minutes twice a day. Five thousand one hundred and fifty-six days equals fourteen years. And when you multiply five thousand one hundred, or sixty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars times twenty-one years, we have spent one million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand three hundred and twelve dollars destroying dogs that were members of families that did nothing wrong because of some that did. BSL's not fair, it's no different than me judging somebody from the color of their skin to the nose on their face. It's wrong, and you're teaching children to judge people by the way they look, by judging the dogs by the way they look. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, Manhattan has a dangerous dog ordinance, Chapter Six, six-twenty-five. And I was an animal control officer for Salina and, and Manhattan, and I found that dangerous dog ordinance in Manhattan to be very effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Northern Manal Salina, be it equine, canine, or feline, there are federal programs that people are in business, and they make money off of this. They put them in big lots. So, there's another place to look, because they're doing it in other states. And these animals roam from state to state to state to state, they don't recognize a border.
Thank you.
I was just asking a person over there if I'm supposed to speak now or later, because I really didn't know, so I didn't know the rules.
No, it's fine, yeah, this is a public comment, so this is.
I'm just here representing CKF Addiction Treatment and the grant that we applied for.
Can I get your name, please?
And my name is Kara Fisk, and I live at six-seventeen Syche Drive in Salina.
Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah. So, this is when I should be speaking?
Yes.
Because I thought it would be a part of the consent agenda, that's what I was told, and I just didn't want to do anything wrong.
We approved the, that was the alcohol, yeah, that, I mean, I guess.
I just didn't see it come up, and I've been here since you called the meeting to order.
Oh, yeah, it was on our consent agenda, which we kind of.
You do earlier?
Well, what happens is we, it kind of is a, kind of a fast-track part of the meeting where we, so I apologize if you've been sitting here all this time.
That's okay, I'm learning a lot.
My, so my take on that would be, regardless of who you represent or why you're here, if you want to present some information to us, we are happy to receive it.
Well, if nothing else, I will tell you, thank you, because the last time I was here, and I told you I probably wouldn't be back anytime soon, and I lied. But we were able to get the state, the state of Kansas approval, unanimous approval for the Dunbar Building as a historic site and place. So, now we're on the national waiting list, and we expect that to have that within the next ninety days. So, we're, we're really excited about that and appreciate your help. And then we applied for the grant for five hundred thousand dollars, and that will go into the Dunbar Building to help us renovate that and get that ready to go. So, I just wanted to answer any questions or talk about that, and wasn't sure, because I was waiting. I was told it'd be in the consent agenda, but I didn't know the rules, so I apologize for that, but.
No apology necessary, and we appreciate the work you've done, and I think, go ahead.
You did, you did see the blue sheet.
I do not.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you'll stick around later, we'll, I guess, we'll show you, we have a breakout of how we're doing that for you and everything, so.
Perfect.
Okay.
I will get out of your, your way and look at your blue sheet later. Thank you.
I hope you enjoyed the meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
I would adjourn.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.